Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm here to present the Real Estate Assessors' annual presentation for the fiscal year 24. We've completed the first phase of the land book, which includes analyzing all the sales and taking a look at the data through the end of 2023 to 2022. That's the first phase of it, and by code, I have to be complete on that process by the end of January. The second phase of that process will include some projections for two quarters of new constructions, as well as plats and rezonings, along with some adjustments for appeals, value due to appeals. And before we get started, I just wanted to throw a huge thank you out to my team that we have. They do a thankless job, and they do it well. I had to check some numbers. It kind of baffled me there for a minute, but since 2019, we've had to fill 20 positions due to resignations and retirements, and that's out of a staff of 35. And I have to say that it's taken us some time to fill those positions, but I'm really enthusiastic about the new members we've hired and all their energy, teamed up with all the people who have been there for a long time and have some great leadership and training. So I'm really grateful to be the one supporting this team. I'm also excited with some technology that we have. It's been a few years since we've had upgrades in technology, and I appreciate city council's support of those initiatives. We recently implemented a mobile data collection device, which allows us to update data directly from the field. It's kind of reduced that redundancy of doing things out on paper and bringing them back in. Human error has down on that, and we've already seen some positive results with that tool. We're also in the process of working through a visual analysis mapping tool that, for the first time in a long time, will allow us to create our own maps and gives us an idea of pinpointing data errors and also taking a look at trends and customizing those maps for our efforts. And lastly, but not least importantly, we're really excited about an initiative to modernize our software that's been in the works for some times. We're working on software now that was implemented back in 2008. This software is the sole software responsible for housing your single largest source of revenue information. That's all the real estate data responsible for notices, the land books, tax bills, ownerships, processing values. And we're hoping that we can get through the analysis part of that. That's in the works right now, so we're really excited about getting to work on that soon in the future. So for the FY '24 real estate assessments, I'm projecting a total assessment of a little over $76 billion. That's going to result in a tax revenue of $755 million. And based on the dollar, each dollar of that assessment will be about a $7 million, or I'm sorry, each penny will be about a $7 million, generate a $7 million change. This projection is about a 9.47% increase over the FY '23. And again, that's for the total land book. Once it's done, we'll be finalized in the August timeframe. Slide four is a breakdown of assessments and parcel counts by district. As everyone is aware, we sent out over 156,000 real estate assessment notices on Friday for all the taxable parcels, and this just shows you the breakdown of those districts. This slide gives you an idea of the amount of effort that our team puts into assessing all the parcels in the city. So not only are we responsible for valuing the taxable parcels, but the exempt parcels as well. So that's about 162,000 or 163,000 parcels. And we're responsible for, again, the value. We do quarterly new constructions updates on those values. We're responsible for tracking ownership, site's address, legal descriptions. All of that we take off of the, we gather from the recorded data from the clerk of courts and reenter it into our systems to make sure that we have proper bills, proper notices, information go into the correct owners. You can see that the number of transfers is down 15,000 from the 18,000 we had last calendar year. So the transfer numbers are down a little bit, while plats and corrections stayed about the same. When we break down that 9.47% projected appreciation, that's appreciation of, most of it is about appreciation, a 9% appreciation. 0.4% of that I'm projecting is growth, which again is due to a couple quarters of new construction, plats and rezonings tempered by appeals. And you can see this is our, we had a relatively flat appreciation up through about 2022, where we saw about a 4% increase, and this is our second year of about an over a 9% appreciation. When we take a look at appreciation by categories and our major changes, residential, we had an overall median change of 9.04, a mean of 9.61% change. Residential median was 9.2%. Apartments overall were a 6.25%, but there are various categories in apartments. Some of the larger complexes are probably closer to a 10 or 11%. And again, for our income and expense data for this fiscal year, we're looking at 2021 income and expense data. So we're a couple of years behind on that, and it's typical. We've done that every year. It just takes us that long to gather data and get things in a row. So apartments was 6.25. The commercial industrial was about 3% included in, excuse me, included in that commercial industrial or hotels. Vacancy was down with hotels from the prior years, and revenue was up. I would say overall, the hotels in that category were about 15% of 15% this year, whereas they were about a breakeven last year, again recovering from COVID. The median change of residential property by value range, last year, all these categories were pretty similar. We've seen a little bit of a jump in our lower value properties and our higher value properties. The lower because, I would say, the lower value properties were of greater interest to investors. They saw an opportunity to purchase homes, put a little improvement into them, and saw some investment return quickly on reselling in three to four to five months. Excuse me. When we look at the median change of residential property by year built, you can slide back, sorry. By year built, you can see our older inventory and our newer inventory actually had the highest mean assessment. And that's due to the fact that all of our, most of our property built in the 1950s and before are all based in the very valuable waterfront areas, North Virginia Beach, surrounding the bays and the oceans, and also our historic homes. The bulk of our stock is built in the 1980s, as you could see on that last chart up there. Okay. Our median appreciation, we were relatively stable in these last few years till about 19, or till '22, where we jumped from about a 2% to a 4.46% median appreciation. Last year, we were up over 10%. This year, we're down just a little bit of that to 9.04%, and we'll see what happens in the following years with the market in the real estate. The mean and median residential values by property type, this is comparing January to January values. And the breakdown by type, you can see we saw our highest change in median in townhouses and low-rise condominiums. Overall, with all residences, we had about a median assessment of 326,800, almost 330, with a change in median of 9.7% overall. And again, you can see that we've continued this upward trend from '22, where we've increased probably 11% or so up until 326,800, which is our median assessment of this year, where prior to that in '21 and before, we saw kind of a gradual increase in that change. This is our comparison by classification, where we take a look at our commercial versus residential values. This typically doesn't vary much from year to year. About 86% of our values is in residential and another 14% attributable to the commercial classification codes. When we take a look at new construction, new construction was definitely down again from last year, based on the cost of materials and supply train issues. About 76% of our new construction was again residential. We had an overall $284 million in new construction values. 23% of that was commercial. I will say that we do have some rather large commercial improvements in the works for 2023. Embassy Suites was recently completed and is not a part of these figures yet. The Moxie Hotel at the oceanfront is scheduled to be completed in '23. In addition to that, we have six self-storage facilities, centers that are due to be complete, as well as nine apartment complexes that should add an estimated 1,500 units to our inventory once they're complete. Again, this is just showing that we've had a decrease in new construction since about 2020, and it's due to residential with a limited land supply for redevelopment, cost of materials, and supply train issues. The number of housing units, we dropped from 700 to 431 for 2022. About, there was an equal mix of new construction residential homes, condos, and apartments in that 431 units. And although the number of housing units were down, the mean and mean assessment certainly was not. We had, I think these increases represent about an 18% increase in the median and a 22% in the mean from 2021. We had 117 units that were $875,000 to over $2 million that were built in Point Chesapeake on the way, the bay in Oceans 42. And then we had 46 homes in this inventory that were over $1 million located in Bay Colony, Cavalier, Sandbridge, North Virginia Beach. This is a heat map that kind of gives you an idea by number of units built, where that new construction is taking place. The yellow indicates more sales, more new constructions were built in those areas. Legacy at Baker is up in the District Four area. Spence Crossing in District 10 had a number of new units. And then the enclave at Courthouse Landing, Princess Anne Meadows and Kingston Estate in District Two. And again, the upper value units were up in North Virginia Beach and Oceans 42, up on Shore Drive area. When we look at new home construction by value range, last year, about half of our inventory was valued between $350,000 and $750,000. You can see this year, it's creeping up over the $500,000 range. And again, if you think about the Point Chesapeake on the bay and the Oceans 42, that attributed to some of this increase in value for those areas. Only 21% of our inventory for new construction was valued below $350,000. For changes in land, we haven't had a lot of new development. You'll notice we haven't had a lot of new residential subdivisions being built. $36 million in 2022. It's down a little bit from 2021 as well. Our special service districts and TIFs, the Sandbridge District is at $1.7 billion for FY '24. Central Business District, South TIF, which includes the SSD, is at $1.17 billion. And the Central Business SSD is at $535 million as of January. Dredging districts, we haven't had any new dredging districts this year, but they've certainly continued to increase in value, as you can see in the figures here. The Virginia Landmark Registry is a program that was developed to promote the preservation of historic properties. It's administered by the state, and it reduces the tax by 47 cents, which would be 52 cents with our current tax rate. It's a 15-year program. The Jefferson Manor Motel was added last year, and other than that, we haven't had a lot of new changes. But we do have two properties that will be included next year, the Blue Marlin Lodge and the Crest Kitchenette Motel are coming onboard there. The Virginia Beach Historical Rehabilitation are for properties that are historically significant structures, that have to be listed on the Virginia Beach Historical Register and have to be 50 years of age or older. This is a 15-year credit, hasn't changed much in this, in this 15-year, I'm sorry, runs for 15 years. We haven't had any new properties since 2017, and the rehab credit is calculated once that redevelopment or rehabilitation has been completed. The Vibe District, come back. Again, it's, this is a 10-year program. We had two that were in the program last year and one new entry this year, which is the DeRicon or DeRicon Restaurant. A 10-year program, and these properties must be a minimum of 20 years old to qualify for the program. And the APZ, we continue to just have this single parcel in the APZ zone, which again is a 15-year credit and follows the same structure as the rehab credit is calculated once the renovations are complete. The Energy Efficiency Program, on the other hand, is one of our fastest-growing programs. We manage this program. Planning authorizes properties to go into this program. There was an, almost an 83% increase in this program between last year and this year, and that's attributable to, we had one high-rise condominium, Harbor Gate Condominium, where all 120 units were qualified for the program, as well as six commercial apartment complexes which qualified for the program. And again, this is a 15-cent credit. There's no end time to this credit, and it's transferable as well. Land use, we haven't had a lot of changes in the acreage under land use. 898 parcels for 32,936 acres, which represents about 21% of the city's total acreage. The tax-deferred amount on that is $2,786.66. And for last year, we, you can go to the next slide. Last year, we rolled, in 2022, we rolled back 123 acres for $434,722 in taxes. So what happens with the rollback is once that property either is rezoned to a more intensive use or by owner request, it comes out of the land use programs, and we paid back taxes, deferred back taxes on five years plus interest on that, on those acreage that it rolled back. The senior exemption programs and the disabled veterans programs are administered by the Commissioner of Revenue. They're included here because they're on your land book, but the commissioner is responsible for these figures and numbers. So in closing, I'd like to remind everyone that we did mail out 156,000 notices on Friday. Everybody should have your notice of real estate assessments. We'll be holding hearings in our office through May 15th. The land book, once we get to the second phases of those with the projections, will be closed in August for a September 1 published date. There's going to be an annual report, and the district report with, which has changes percentage by neighborhoods will be available on our website after this presentation. And thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, outstanding. Okay, work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Sue, for that research and presentation. It's not an easy job for you to do. It's a very important job as well. Can you go back to slide number 10? Because I want to compare your assessments for 2023 with pre-recession, the Great Recession, 2007 and '08, and note the difference there, and that's appreciation. Is there any consideration, are we back to those values now in overall, or are we about the same?
I don't know that we're back to those values now. There's certainly probably a stall. I don't see some, I don't see us appreciating back to that era from that timeframe.
What are values overall compared to the values today versus 2007 and '08? I believe they're back to those values.
And I can research that and get you some figures on that, to be sure.
That was the high-level mark that it took almost since then to get back to that, those values today.
Certainly.
And then one or two more questions.
Sure.
Generally speaking, the rule of thumb, obviously I'm in real estate, some of us use assessments for the good or for the worse for values. The general rule of thumb was, or used to be, that assessments are slightly below value, market value, or can you address that, or is it at market value?
Well, so by code, I am charged with assessing everything at 100% of market value. One of the things that we have to consider in assessments is equity of assessments as well as market value. When we're working with larger numbers and larger interest rates, we have to take into account statistics. So we definitely miss higher-low in some aspects, but are, as I said, we are charged with 100% of market value. We don't always hit the mark, and we're happy to discuss it if we've missed it on either end.
Thank you. Just one last observation, that I note that 14% of the assessments are commercial real estate, and the balance, 86% residential, which I believe the understanding is that puts a lot of burden on our homeowners and residence owners versus commercial real estate that require less city services. So I think the focus, we continue to need to have more commercial real estate in our city to relieve our taxpayers.
Yeah, let me just say, from what I understand, the 8515 differential has always been pretty historic here for a long time. And the other thing is too, as we hopefully generate new businesses and new opportunities, we create those new revenue streams that will more compensate, you know. But once again, I think we had a recent presentation where, you know, the year after COVID lit up, or oceanfront brought in $2.1 billion, and I believe seeing that that translated to a $1,700 safe, you know, help, you know, with the burger, right, of real estate. So, but once again, as we're creative and moving forward and bringing in new businesses, new opportunities, bringing in new tourists with new attractions that, you know, we're going to be doing, taking Virginia Beach to the next level, we're confident that it's going to address that. Okay. A question.
Sue, thank you. I appreciate your exemplary communication, letting us know it was going out regardless of whether we had our meeting or not.
Thank you.
Our inbox has been flooded. There seems to be some confusion within the public about why hotel assessments that are on very valuable pieces of property that may have been renovated are lower. And I heard you explain that those assessments are not just land and structure, it's also income that the hotels generated, it's based off of that, not just, is that accurate?
We consider all three approaches to value when we're valuing those properties, but typically hotels are heavy on income, taking a look at income and expenses. Correct.
And so with Mayor Dyer just said we had a historic year, is the assumption that this next cycle, we'll see the rebound in assessment values for the hotels?
Correct, we should. We're taking a look at 2022 income and expense for next year's reassessment.
And then from a residential standpoint, I've received quite a bit of emails. Some individuals think the tax rates have gone, which have, is the assessment, the 99 cents is flat. But can you explain maybe the city's position or our strategy during COVID-19? Did we, did we hold back lifting those values, or, because there is some confusion amongst the public.
I don't think we held back, certainly not in residential. We were able to take a look at the sales and indicate, you know, the sales are what they are, and I'm charged with 100% of market value. I believe there probably was some projection with what COVID, how COVID was going to affect our commercial industries, and there was probably a little bit of leniency in there of prior assessors. So I'm not exactly sure what measures were taken, but there was, there was a bit of buffer in there, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, to clarify an additional question that Councilman Taylor asked. I think in the '21 proposed budget, City Council lowered the tax rate. And then in the, to 99 cents, it was over 99 cents. And then in the '22 budget, the current budget that we're in right now, the City Council kept the tax rate the same, but basically the 4.3 cents that the public authorized in the bond referendum, City Council's direction was to absorb that within the 99 cent tax rate. So the public authorized a 4 cent increase, and City Council, in essence, put that 4 cents within the 99 cents. So it's basically 95 or 96 cents was the, 95 cents was the, was the base tax rate that they add the bond referendum on top of it to kind of bring it to the 99.
And then, you know, then if I could also add that, you know, once again, as we confront another challenging budget comment, one of the main priorities I think we determined as a council back then, you know, once again, you know, given the fact of public safety shortages and, you know, some of the other employees, you know, engineers, and even the folks in Public Works and, you know, that, you know, really needed, you know, some relief to, for lack of better terms, draining, bleeding a lot of employees out and affecting our operations as a city. We took it upon ourselves as a council that we would have to make some, you know, corrections and additions to, you know, that to maintain our essential city services. And, you know, and, but once again, you know, the thing is, it's always going to be a balance, because, you know, I think we're going to find that we're going to come together very shortly as we address a very challenging budget going forward, assessing priorities. And obviously, we're going to take in, you know, words common about the value of the impact on, you know, residential, you know, property. But once again, you know, we had to make some tough decisions, and I think Patrick was spot on, you know, because we determined that the number two priorities in the city were, you know, the flooding situation and also public safety. And that became our priority in that budget cycle. Yeah, Rocky?
Sue, I see several members of your team members here, and I want to say thank you to you guys. You've been burning the midnight oil to get this done. I certainly appreciate it and like to compliment you, but thank you for the communication and everything that went on with this, that we were delayed last week. But thank you very much, and our best to your team.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And Sue, I just want to thank you for the seamless continuing, seamless continuum of excellence and leadership in your area and, you know, operating, you know, with, you know, vacancies and everything. You're one of the most important functions that we have in a city. In other words, we can't run a city without you. So I really just want to thank you, your magnificent staff, for the work that you continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I truly appreciate that.
Okay. Okay, Mr. DeHany.
Mr. Mayor, as you all know, we've been sharing with you all, we've been sharing with the sheriff's office. I've requested funding to add body worn cameras and the associated equipment and software to match the capabilities of the Virginia Beach Police in the current fiscal year. For council situational awareness, please note that the sheriff's office has requested funding for body worn cameras to be considered as part of the city manager's proposed budget for the fiscal year '24. However, with the pending incoming special events, such as something to water Jackalope and Beach It and various other scheduled events that's supposed to come ahead of the fiscal year, the sheriff has requested that we make the funds available to his office for body worn cameras ahead of the budget process. So basically, what we're seeking today, council, seeking direction from you all as it relates to whether the city should fund and authorize body worn cameras for the sheriff's office.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, Kevin Fairley, I'm with Information Technology. I was one of the staff members on a team that did some analysis to prepare the presentation for us today. So as City Manager DeHany mentioned, we do have a request from the sheriff's office to provide body worn cameras and the funding necessary for the accessories, the licensing, the services to make the capabilities available to all sworn staff members that are providing law enforcement services in support of the police department, also those that are, execute civil processing, as well as increasing security at the correction center and the court building, which is part of their, certainly their primary mission. The goal's to achieve and improve heightened security and safety for staff and resources. The crux of the matter is the sheriff's office needs a way to capture and store video of activities that occur when they interact with the public. And again, being that force multiplier for the police department at the oceanfront and during those large-scale events. So the initial fund request actually came in as part of the FY '24 CIP process. If that, if the funding were to be approved in FY '24 on that track, there would not be funding available till July. So that would put them behind on having the capability. So that would put them behind on having the capability to serve between now and it would likely be August or later prior to the cameras being able to be deployed at that time. The, some of the rationale, again, they have 441 sworn law enforcement personnel, they're monitoring, tracking 1,100 inmates at any given time, they do 9,000 admits and releases a year, 94,000 civil processes in a year, they do start their support of the PD in the February timeframe. I think they start with polar plunge, particularly as one of those public events where they pick that up. And of course, it would carry all the way through the season up until Neptune Festival activities in October. So the Police Department, they have their personnel with the body worn cameras. They did their 10-year contract in 2021, and the, they used a cooperative contract that would also be available for the Sheriff's Department to be able to leverage, to be able to procure the same services from the preferred vendor, which our PD uses, which is Axon. So there are multiple levels of service and capabilities that Axon offers to law enforcement agencies. The Police Department uses the Officer Safety Program seven plus premium, that's the vendor name of the service. But essentially, it provides the officers with the software licensing, the body worn cameras, tasers. The body worn cameras also are refreshed by the manufacturer every 30 months. So if you were looking at a 10-year contract, they would get four replacements of the body worn camera hardware. The tasers are a little bit different. The tasers are refreshed on a 60-month cycle. So in that case, you would have two replacements of the tasers. Some of the other capabilities of the system, after you upload the video activity, and usually that's done on a end of shift basis where they bring that camera back in, put it in its cradle, and the material is uploaded, it does automatic audio transcription. So as long as the interaction was audible, the discussion, whatever was going on in that activity, it would transcribe that associated with the video, which is certainly a great efficiency versus having to go back and watch an entire video to, and then transcribe it yourself in a manual fashion. Also with the OSP program, you get the unlimited storage and recording, unlimited third-party storage. What that means is if you're in an interaction and maybe a business that was located near that interaction also has security camera footage, you would be able to upload that into the system as well. And it would also maintain that recording as part of the case, and it would also audio transcribe those recordings as they were uploaded. The system also comes with software capabilities, so they would also have access to a records management system, that's the same records management system that the PD is using, standards management and performance management. So not only do you get the hardware, you get up to date and new capabilities associated with the work and activities of the Sheriff's Department. The last one, VR, I apologize, I meant to change that to virtual reality. You also get access to virtual reality training where an officer would be put in a virtual reality environment. They could do, there are 20-plus modules that are provided along with the licensing by the vendor for different scenarios that an officer could work their way through as a, again, as a training activity. The next program is called Unlimited Seven Plus Premium. The only true difference between the Officer Safety Program and this one is it removes tasers. So they would still have body worn cameras, still have the licensing, unlimited recording, audio transcription of anything uploaded, third-party storage, and then the additional software modules to use. But essentially, again, no hardware for training, I'm sorry, tasers, no training for tasers. And that, again, is the big difference between the preferred model and this mid-tier model, I'll call it. One step down is Unlimited Seven Plus. It removes the taser and training. It also removes the virtual reality training. You lose the audio automatic transcription service, and you also cannot upload external videos into the system. It would only capture the video that comes from the devices that are part of the program. Replacement lifecycle would be the same for the cameras, a 30-month, so you would get the four refreshes. So to put some cost perspective to those items, the preferred model and the all-in option would be the Officer Safety Program seven plus. We're looking at a phased implementation to try to get cameras in the field as soon as possible to cover the summer season work, particularly at the oceanfront. And we have to remember today, the Sheriff's Department at this point only has, I think, less than 10 body worn cameras and 10 tasers that they're testing as part of a pilot program. So they already have an environment that's up and running, and they have been testing those two devices, but certainly not enough to do what they need to do. So the request is to, to bring in 220 cameras as soon as possible. And then we would look to add the remaining cameras, which would be another 280 devices to reach the 500 total requested devices. And we would do that after the July 1 budget activity and roll those out in fiscal year '24. As we mentioned, it also replaces the existing standard system, the existing records management system and performance management systems, and then that lifecycle. So under this model, to get your 220 cameras onsite would be $640,123. The next load for the 280 cameras is going to be about $1.1 million all in. So the way it works is it builds, right? You add 220 cameras, the next year, you're required to pay the maintenance on those devices and add the new devices. And then when you go into FY24, that total annual recurring cost for the devices and the maintenance and the support goes to $1.7 million as an annual recurring cost. The mid, I'll call again, the mid-tier option, which is Unlimited Seven Plus Premium, again, removes the tasers and the training. The initial 220 devices would be around $580,000. The target to add the additional 280 cameras in FY24. I've forgotten to mention on the last slide, that $30,000 that's listed, that would be the implementation, implementation of their standard system. And then they would do their records management system implementation in the FY25 year after they've gotten everything in place. So annual recurring costs over time after implementation is just under $1.5 million. The body worn camera only option, again, removes the tasers, transcription, third-party storage and some community engagement licenses, goes down to four, just under $450,000 to get the first 220 in. The next 280 would be about $706,000 with the standards, with the records management in '25, and the annual recurring cost would be about $1.1 million.
We basically need direction from council as it relates to something that we want to move towards. If you, if council would say something that they want to consider, then we would ask to bring something on your March 21 council agenda for you all to review and consider for a vote. There's a myriad of different options, right? You know, but basically it's like, does council want to provide the VBSO with body worn cameras? There's a significant cost associated with it. There's different tiers, and there's different ways that we can phase it to reduce that cause if that's something that we, we want to do.
Hey, Rosemary?
I think we have all found out how important body worn cameras are for, for the citizens and then, but also for the officers as well. Everybody that's doing the right thing is protected, and they become very, very invaluable in things that we see on TV, but also in our own community. And the Sheriff's Department, they've been so great to partner with our police, and they're putting themselves on a lot of outside, especially situations that I think this is a necessity. I think it's good that they're asking for it. I'm not sure which tier. I personally would like for the staff to evaluate what they think the need is for, and what tier would fit better. I don't feel qualified to do that. And, and if we do need to phase it in, but start out immediately so that we have it for these festivals that are coming up, especially since the sheriff has been so gracious to offer personnel to come and help us manage it, which saves our city a lot of money by doing that. So I really think we need to move forward, but I'd prefer for y'all to help decide which level.
Okay, we're going to go Chris and then Barbara.
Thank you so much.
Presentation. Which option, which I guess option is, are the Virginia Beach Police currently using?
The OSP, seven plus.
Okay.
Seven plus premium.
Seven plus.
Seven plus premium.
So no tasers or training?
They're using the seven plus premium. Go back to the seven plus premium slide.
No, I'm sorry.
That's not.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay.
So yes, tasers. They have the full complement of services available.
And this is the one that the Sheriff's Office desires as well. They desire to have similar and the same equipment as the PD.
Are Virginia Beach sheriffs currently using tasers within the, within the jails or any?
No, sir.
And then how many, I think we were all privileged to be able to tour the Commonwealth Attorney's Office and meet with him. And one of the challenges they're facing was the administrative aspect of reviewing all the footage. How many administrative staff, is there any ask there for this, or does the, go ahead, Patrick?
I'll speak on it, but you can answer questions, sir.
Has that been, that variable been considered?
So I think, and then Kevin, correct me if I'm wrong, in the last, last year before the year was out, we added additional staff to the Commonwealth Attorney's Office to address some of the concerns that they're seeing with the increased FOIA requests and needs to have these, these documents at courts as well. The, not to get ahead of council, but as part of the recommended budget, part of the proposed budget, the Commonwealth Attorney asks for additional staff, so we're considering, we're currently considering that as well. Typically, how the Commonwealth Attorney has worked with us is that as we add on additional body worn camera, in like, for example, the Police Department was a phased approach, the Commonwealth Attorney sees what kind of impact it's having for staff. And then they may ask a year later, 18 months later, for additional staff to accommodate that. That's basically the same kind of relationship we'll have now. And it's a note for council, I think you mentioned, you probably heard it as well, there's a shallow requirement from the General Assembly in the state code that requires that we fund a certain portion of support staff to assist Commonwealth attorneys with body worn camera footage. But likely probably what will happen here is the Commonwealth Attorney would like to assess to see what this means, if it's something that they can absorb with the staff that we recently added, plus the staff that they're requesting that we add to their office as well.
Thank you.
Barbara?
I agree with what Ms. Wilson said about the, the value of body worn cameras. I think we've found that it's expected now. And I think we did take a lot of time phasing them into our Police Department, but I certainly recognize the value and have done that. And I guess, looking back over our relationship with the Sheriff's Office and, and bringing it into a comparable position with our Police Department, it looks like it was pretty much started officially in 2018 when we did compensation studies to make sure that we were on parity with the police and sheriff. And we've been trying to bring all of that together since then. And just a couple of years ago, we made sure that we went back and included the Sheriff's Department in the educational thing that we are doing with our own people. And this, this relationship between the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department has just become very good. And we can just thank the folks in those two departments for working together and helping us to provide this safety that we need for our citizens by, by working together so well. And I do appreciate the fact that they have come to us and asked for the body worn cameras. Speaks highly for them. And I certainly think we do need to, again, now, instead of waiting until July 1, if we are going to be able to utilize it more this summer. But my question then is, is there going to be time for training that's going to be necessary to, for the use of making this conversion? How long does it take us to get these cameras here and then be able to, to have these folks get used to using them? Is that going to be able to be done in this time period?
So Councilmember Henley, I'm going to speak on this, but there's members from the Sheriff's Office and also Councilmember Holcomb. But from my understanding, there is time for that, and the Sheriff's Department's actually already demoing the equipment now, so they have a familiarity with it.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Henley. I see the undersheriff and five or six deputies out here. He brought the professional standards office and the training department, and they have been working on this. We did, we've been doing some demos. We've been anticipating this coming because we don't feel like that we can allow law enforcement officers to go into the community without this piece of forensic evidence. It's very important. It's just as important to me as the ICRB is making sure we have this video so that everybody can see what's going on. And I can promise you this, if you have a body worn camera on and you're a bad actor, I hope it shows you're a bad actor and we get you out of here because we don't want you in our ranks. So I think the body worn cameras can be very important, and we are ready to, to roll it out at the Sheriff's Department.
I, I think that it's good that we're at the budget time so that we are looking at this, and this would have been an app, a request within this budget, so we're just advancing it a few months. And we have the general fund revenue that we can use at this point, or is the Sheriff's Department there absorbing this, or how is this working out?
So Councilmember Henley, the memo that we sent, and then the budget director's here, so Kevin, please feel free to come up if I misstep or misspeak. What we're proposing right now, if council wants to do this in this mid-current fiscal year right now, is that we use general fund fund balance to prop it up, and then we would carry it into the annualized budget, depending on what, how many council wants us to give the Sheriff's Office. Is anything wrong with that?
So we, we can, we can do this, is the, the thing. I'm making sure that we have the funding available and it's, it's within our capabilities.
Councilmember Henley, based on what we see right now, the city can still do this and be within our relative, what, eight to 12% of fund balance standard that we take, that we like to keep for our, our bond closings and our debt metrics, policies and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Amelia?
Yes, in agreement with Barbara and Rosemary. I noticed that when we had the meeting out there, remember I kept saying, please get Chief Nudiget up there, because that was the validity of his saying how important having this partnership was. And now you're mentioning about this program seven, and that's the top, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're talking about seeing, he feels this is the best one to get.
Well.
Or not.
So Councilmember Ross Hammond, the OSP seven plus premium is the one that the Police Department, Police Officers has right now. The Sheriff's Office requests parity and would like similar, similar stuff that, like that. Council does not have to give them that same level. However, I would say that if they're engaging our public, this affords them less lethal ways of enforcing the law when there's times to get, when things escalate to that level, right? So they currently do not have tasers. This will give them the ability to have tasers. So if we are to do this, it probably makes more sense to give them less lethal options if the situation dictates or necessitates it.
Thank you.
Okay, let me, yes, Josh.
Thank you. I, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also agree with the Vice Mayor and Henley and other folks who have spoken so far. Quick question on, you know, the use of the body worn cameras. You know, obviously on the public You know, obviously on the public is one thing. I want to understand maybe in the correctional center setting, how the cameras might be used there and if there's, if there are any differences.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Schulman, this is one of the areas where there is, I don't wanna say disagreement, but there's one of the areas where staff feels like we need a decision point of from council, right? The sheriff were very, the Sheriff's Office would very much like to get 500, right? And that'll be, they got about 450 staff, the PD, they have, say they have 750 staff, they have about 800 cameras, right? So just enough if one breaks, they can pull something from the dock and stuff like that. The sheriff wants 500 staff, at least me, the budget team and probably IT as well, wonders if 220 could work because 220 could possibly be the ones for their public facing. When I say public facing, their summons, their warrants, and the ones that may assist on the special events. The Sheriff's Office has a different opinion on that, right? You know, and, and it may make sense to hear the Sheriff's Office's position on that, but staff is wondering if that's one of the ones that we could possibly do, is do 220 because that will cover special events, folks, and summons and warrants and evictions when they, when they do them as well. But they obviously have a different opinion. And I don't know if somebody from the Sheriff's Office would like to speak as it relates to that.
I'm the sheriff there, he can answer you that. Thank you.
And part of what staff's calculus in that as well is that it is significantly cheaper, but again, it's, council could decide on how it wants to go based on the merits of the dialogue.
Hey, welcome.
And City Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I didn't hear everything that City Manager said. I've been a firearm instructor for a very long time, so you wanna feed me that question one more time?
I think, undersheriff, I think basically the question is, the need for 500, is it, what stipulate the need for 500? And the better understanding of how can, how would you utilize body worn cameras inside the courthouse and also the jail facilities? Is that close? Councilmember Schulman?
Yes, that's right.
All right, we'll start with how we came up with 500. I met with City Manager's staff. We initially looked at 600. We tailored it down to 500. We broke it down into somewhat consumable pieces. The first look at was 220. We have 105 people that we've dedicated to augment the police department for one day in something in order. It's multiple day events. So we knew that going into something in order from February all the way to November, we were working in some type of law enforcement capacity. We also realized that the body worn cameras, for example, inside the jail, we have cameras. We also have the lack of cameras, and on top of that, we need transparency, accountability, and protection for our staff. And I wondered, the reason I went mayor if I can, the reason I went and got my phone, I got an update from one of my chiefs, Lily sitting here moments ago. I'll leave you out some of the details. Our deputies assisted VBPD with shooting victim. Interviewing witnesses and providing support for PD apprehended subjects, she sent me the draft, sent me all the information, talked about CPR, talked about the wounds, talked about everything that they participated in. These deputies wear a uniform from when they get up in the morning until they go home. We need to have this type of device. So when it comes to the amount that we asked for 220 to progress it to 500, it's because we need this in law enforcement now. Can I answer your question?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the undersheriff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think at this point, if I can make a recommendation, you know, once again, I think we're gonna be hard pressed for a budget, but can we afford not to do this in a lot of ways? You know, the cost of being the safest city in the country comes at a cost. And when you think about the innovations that Chief Nutigate did with bringing technology, Shopify, Spotter, and all the other things that are doing is helping make it a safer city. And, you know, and in an era of litigious society that we're in, it's good to have documented proof, you know, going forward. And I think, once again, I think the recognition is that if there are, you know, bad actors that are, you know, you know, on the public safety side, you know, this is also, you know, a good win-win check and balance system for what we're doing. So the recommendation is, I think if you, you know, go ahead and move forward with, you know, maybe a couple of recommendations that we can weigh in, and as the budget becomes more crystallized, that, you know, we might be able to make that value.
So Mr. Mayor, in order to meet the timeline, we'd have to get council to vote in affirmative that this is something that they want to authorize the Sheriff's Office to have and also fund. So what we're proposing is that on March 21st, we'll put on your agenda a voting item for you all to review and consider this. And the voting item will be for the 220 for this initial year because that's basically, they won't be able to get 600 from the manufacturer, right? And then from what I'm, from what I'm hearing from council, but council can tell me if they're hearing differently as well, it seems like there's an appetite from council to give the 500. Yeah, so we'll phase in 220 now, give the 500 overall requested from the Sheriff's Office, and then the rest of that we'll, we'll bring into the operating budget for fiscal year 23, 24. But what you vote on right now is just authorizing us to get started with it for 220. And then also we'll probably put language in there to say that we will likely bring this into, that we will bring this into the 23, 24 operating budget.
Okay, anybody object to that course for now? I think it seems prudent at this point, but, you know, once again assuring our valued Sheriff's Department that, you know, you know, we're moving in the right direction and their, you know, concerns too. Okay? All right, thank you all very much.
Mr. Mayor, the next presentation, as Tiffany comes up, I'll give a quick preamble to it. But basically, basically, what we found from our resident survey was that one of the high, one of the things that our public seem, articulate that we need to work on is being more mindful and incorporating citizen feedback, input, and engagement as it relates to policy matters and policy discussions, right? And the public is basically asking to spend more time with their council members. We've seen an uptick in requests for more district specific communication, and we want to make sure that we can meet that expectation of council. So what, the purpose of this presentation is to layer out that, how we're currently structured from a communication standpoint, some of the ask and the requests we've gotten from council members, and just to get a feedback from you all as it relates to, do you want us to move towards prioritizing more district specific, more district, town hall, community engagement-like ventures? And then letting you all understand that in order for us to do that, we have to allocate the resources for that. And we would like time to explore that and bring back something to you all in a future date.
Welcome, Tiffany.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be before you to talk about communications. I've worked with you all on many different initiatives, and being in a new district environment presents an incredible opportunity to not only offer citywide communications at a level that is already exceeding national averages, but also enhance district communications. I want to talk about what that could look like, what the opportunities are. We have the tools available to do it. And as the City Manager referenced, for me, it's hearing from you, your desire for that and what that could look like, so that I can go back and look at the resources I do have and put together some options for how we should go, move forward as community engagement continues and even more so now, becomes a priority for our community. So let's talk a little bit about looking at the results of that citizen satisfaction survey. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about how the Communications Department is currently structured. We'll talk about what those opportunities look like. And also I want to spend some time with you talking about public engagement because it is a great opportunity. Again, our residents are, are asking for more ways that they can engage with you. And there's different levels and different resources that are applied. I want to make sure we're, we're speaking the same language when it comes to public engagement, so that not only can I meet your expectations, but I can build trust with the community. Based on the recent resident satisfaction survey, our community has asked us to prioritize four areas. The first, the effectiveness of our city communication with the public. And I mentioned and I showed on the previous slide, the results of that. Again, I am so proud that we exceed national averages in this area, but we obviously want to continue to improve upon that, particularly over the next two years. Our residents are asking for more ways to participate in city policy development and decision-making. They want more information about local government services and activities. They want to know how to engage with you, with their local government, and provide input straight to you. So let's look at how my department is currently structured, and I know there's a lot of data here on this slide. But for those who are watching online too, our department really enjoys, and I've got incredible professionals who are working to reach 450,000 residents with, with information, with opportunities that affect the whole city. We've been doing that for a long time. We do it really well. We also serve as an in-house ad agency. And I think that's the piece that, from the outside looking in, people aren't as familiar with. We do have departments that have dedicated communications and marketing support. We have departments that don't. We have departments that have staff, but they need creative services support from us, graphic design, video production. We also support Virginia Beach Public Schools with their video production. In fact, previous budgets have noted that up to 50% of our video production can go to schools, and sometimes that fluctuates every year depending on where schools need us. We offer the live streaming of school board meetings, council meetings, planning and Virginia Beach Development Authority. And a look here on the left is just some data about the number of tasks that our team executes any given year. And again, it fluctuates. Some years there might be more speeches. What we're definitely seeing is an increase in community engagement, a lot more video production. And we're seeing this trend go along with what the residents today expect and want. We already live in a society where communication is highly personalized, very targeted. We see that when we go grocery shopping, or if we're buying clothes, or what news feeds we want. We can customize everything. Now we're in a government structure where perhaps our residents also want more personalized communication. The hypothesis is, would they be more engaged with us and have higher satisfaction if not only in addition to citywide communications, we're being targeted to them, but we're also able to deliver that at a district level? Because it is truly that right in your backyard kind of impact. Here's a look at some of the communication tactics that we don't do, but we could. So I wanted to, and these are just some examples. I've also worked really closely with our library municipal reference team to look at approximately 50 different cities all over the country that are set up in a ward or district structure to see how they are communicating to the residents at this hyper-local level. And I've seen a lot of different examples, but for the most part, here are some things that we could be doing in the future, and I'd like to hear from you if this is something that you're interested in. We'll start with our website on virginbeach.gov. We could have district-specific webpages or microsite that would require resources to populate that with very specific content that would be of interest to that particular district. We could be sending out email marketing or newsletters to those residents. We currently do message our residents via Nextdoor, a social media platform, for that very specific targeting. So there's, these kinds of tools and tactics would just amplify that. We could be publishing regular content or articles, especially as certain topics come up that might be more geographically focused, and produce video storytelling for those districts. We are seeing more requests for surveys to get public input from our residents. We could do that a lot more and hyper-target that to a specific district for you if you have a specific need. And there is an opportunity for dedicated social media sites for the district. Now what that would do would be, we would still populate that with citywide content and opportunities, obviously. But we are thinking maybe residents that live in a particular district might be more apt to pay attention, follow and engage with us at a district level, and that would give us, again, this opportunity to connect in a way we currently aren't. We also could, moving forward, livestream and record district community meetings. Right now, this council policy does require a vote if you have a town hall and you'd like city staff to livestream that to our channels. And so we have done that on occasion. There, we have the, again, we have the equipment, we have the tools to do that. We need the bodies to do that more. We'd like to, but again, it's a resource issue. And when I say it's a resource issue, I want to make it very clear, we will support you and you are our priority. The community is our priority. What ends up happening is that there's an impact to our in-house or internal service delivery for our departments. So while we rarely say no to anyone, it may mean that our internal departments don't get what they need in an appropriate amount of time, or speed to market is delayed because we're working on a big city initiative, or we've had to prioritize our resources around to accommodate big city issues and communication plans. We also know that there's a desire to have our elected officials more present in the community, and we can help you in that way by offering a community calendar, working with you to make sure city leadership, our council members are present and have that, really a community calendar by district, and be able to push out to our residents what's going on right in their backyard and how the city is supporting those, those particular events. And we are right now working to build a subscriber list. I've communicated to you and to our new council members, especially in orientation, we know this is an area that we need to build upon. Our residents do want to hear from us via email, and those, the library has a really strong database, so does Parks and Rec. Residents subscribing to city news is an area we need to improve. I do think possibly if we offered city news in a subscriber list by district, that enhanced communication level would encourage our residents to want to receive city news and possibly engage more with us. So let's pivot to public engagement. And when I say public engagement, I know that could be virtual or in person. We've heard a lot, and we continue to hear a desire for increased public engagement on key issues before you have to make a decision. What I'd like to do is take a look at this chart, and we found this from the International Association for Public Participation. I think it's a beautiful example of how we can start communicating with each other and with the public on what the purpose is for a particular public engagement initiative, and then assigning what tactics go with that. This really helps me in a few ways. One being when you say, let's have public input on this item, I might start asking you more specific questions about what that looks like, so that I don't use resources inefficiently or overuse resources if the public, you know, we're simply trying to inform the public on an item. If we want to consult the public on an item, there's gonna be different kinds of tactics for that. And of course, we can get all the way up to this empower level. And I really like the statement, at the empower level of public impact, public input, which is really the most robust you can, we're saying to our residents, you care about this issue, issue X, and maybe you're leading the initiative, how can we support you? And the build out of those communication plans are going to be even that much more robust. So when we say, or you're looking at an item and say, I want public engagement on that, if we could all start using the same language, are we wanting to inform the public on something that's happening? We want to give them options? Let's consult them? We want to ask them for ideas on a topic? Let's involve them? Let's work together and collaborate? And of course, empower. To bring this to life, I provided you in your presentation deck, examples. Everything from something as simple as a survey to your particular district. Let's say, Councilmember Schulman, we're gonna put together a survey for you to find out, your residents, what kind of items they'd like to hear or talk about at a town hall meeting. That's, that's great. That's hyperlocal. That is a great example of communications where we're consulting our community on a particular topic. There's ways we can involve our residents at a city-wide level. I've provided examples here of the noise ordinance, getting impact on electric vehicle charging stations, or where you've appointed a committee or a commission to look at something, like the citizens review boards and commissions. And again, I've listed out levels all the way up to what we're about to embark on in a very robust way, getting citywide resident input on our election system. My team is determining if this is something that needs to be done in-house or outsourced. And so when you start seeing communications from me, when you say, I want public input on something, this is the type of language and visual tools that I'll start using so that we can all be singing off the same song sheet, so to speak. I also wanted to bring up our district-level event support. I also wanted to bring up our district-level event support and how we are so excited. Several of you have had town halls. Councilmember Henley has been having town halls consistently for a very long time, has a very robust subscriber database there. And we are looking forward to continued support of this very grassroots way to connect with residents. From a communications standpoint, we're excited that people are willing to gather in person, again, after a long time. But we also have the tools available where we can offer virtual options to meet people where they are. But putting those events together is a heavy lift. And so I'm pulling resources, again, away from serving department-level initiatives to support these initiatives. And again, I want to reiterate, I prioritize that, but there's a lot of different pieces that go along with it, whether it's a district meeting or a community walk. So those are just some examples of how the Communications Department is supporting the enterprise or the citywide communications. And so the question really is, and I think this would be a great conversation for us to have, especially during a time where I'm looking to restructure the communications program for the city of Virginia Beach. We had a consultant report that made some recommendations, and your direction on what this looks like really needs to be a part of that, so I know how to lead my team in this particular function moving forward. The first question is, can citywide communications and district-specific communications help improve our effectiveness, engagement levels, and overall resident satisfaction? If so, how would you like that done? What would that look like for you? And whether or not you want me to look at exploring resources or even restructuring my current team to account for this? Because that is an option, too. I'm not up here asking for FTEs today, although I have in the budget asked for a few, so I'll put that out there. But I do really want to understand if this is a direction you think will help improve our resident satisfaction. I'm very eager to support it. It would be really exciting. I need to put together some options for you to consider what that could look like.
Okay. Let me just say something quickly before we take some questions. You know, I think, once again, with the new voting system that we have, it's obviously going to require almost a paradigm shift in the way that we communicate. Once again, we have the intimacy of having district people, but also the responsibility of, you know, citywide. So you're going to have two levels of communication, one at the district level, but also your main topics that, you know, affect the city. And, you know, the fact is, a lot of people don't, you know, communicate the same way. Millennials, you know, communicate different than the World War II generation. But I think, once again, you know, I think, I don't look at it as a challenge. I look at this as the opportunity in speaking to a number of you that we want enhanced public engagement. It helps with the decision process and everything going forward. Then, once again, is, you know, how we're going to do it. And, you know, this is going to kind of segue into a conversation we're going to have a little bit later with the aides in enhancing your abilities, you know, to be more effective and responsive to constituency demand. So this is kind of like, you know, a whole picture about what we're trying to do. But, you know, with everything, you know, the URP, the ugly reality of politics, is that we're going into a lean budget cycle. But we just want to make sure we're doing the one thing that our council and our public considers priorities. So at this point, any other questions or concerns? Rosemary.
Tiffany, I think this is a brilliant plan, if we can do it. And I think, I've said all along, even though we may be representing less people, they expect more of us. And that's how I felt it. I mean, I've been a large member for a really long time, and frankly, I never really got that many phone calls about a pothole or a stoplight or a garbage being picked up. But now that you're a district person, you get, there's a lot more engagement that people want from you, and this really will be a huge help to us. If you can manage it, I think you've put a lot of thought into it. I think it's really a brilliant plan, and I really compliment you and your staff. Thank you for, and thank you for considering the citizens and that survey and what they're asking for, because I think that's what the citizens are going to be expecting from now on. Thank you.
Okay. Barbara, and then Chris, and then Josh.
Well, I was just thinking, while you were talking, what are the people in each district going to be concerned about? Well, they're going to be concerned about land use issues. They're going to be concerned about some facility that they need, and they're... So it's going to really take six votes of council to accomplish anything. Now, how do we convey what each district wants to the rest of the council members so that they know what the district wants? Because one person can't deliver, and a lot of these issues, like I said, are going to be land use issues and those kinds of things that are... How do we make that transition?
Well, I'll say a strong communications team has an even stronger data mining and analytics team and sentiment team. We have the tools that can provide you the data on those very things. If I have, again, the resources to do that, because now I'm pulling in a lot of different data points, social media analysis, public input survey data, and I can package that for you in a way to where you can look and see comprehensively how the city feels on a particular subject, or if they're talking about something or engaging with us on a certain topic more so than the other. So again, it's incredible managing that. I don't have the resources for now. So I think that's, it would be incredible to do it. We could be, I think, a really leading city if we did this well and did it right, and a good example for other cities to follow. But I just, again, I have to rethink, you know, do I continue being an in-house ad agency for departments that don't have this service? Where would they get that support? Or do I ask you for resources? And when I'm up against body-worn cameras, you know, I know you have a lot of hard decisions to make, and so, you know, these are just things for consideration, and it doesn't have to happen all overnight. This could be a phased-in approach, but it is something, if I'm restructuring the communications function, I need to prioritize this and take it into account so that I can come to you with that data.
Yeah, Patrick.
I think the councilmember is Henley. Point, I think if we're able to pivot in this direction, we could get council, the groundswell information, and then, and inform the, and give the council members the information that they can, so you all can have that policy discussion amongst yourselves. Because you're absolutely right, Councilmember Henley. You all run individually, but you all have to govern as a body, right? You know, but informing you all with the data, the information, the resident sentiment that you all need allows you all to be more informed in your discussions and your policymaking. So as you deliberate, you all come together with that, and you all come together and determine a policy guidance and a policy direction you want to give to staff. You know, but basically, where we are today, and what we're trying to articulate with this presentation, is that we're going to work towards coming up with options on how we can enhance, still do our citywide responsibilities, but also enhance district-wide communications. And we're going to look at basically two options, right? One is to reorient and restructure, and that means possibly slowing something down and/or what we could do to add to enhance it. That could possibly be like adding additional staff or adding additional technology to serve as a multiplier for what we already have right now. You know, but what I wanted to get at this was really to let you know that we heard you and that we understand the demands that's put on council now is a lot different now that we're in a different electoral system. But we just want to ask for time as we try to pivot this system that's focused for so long on citywide and internal agency support towards helping to enhance you all and to meet the requirements of our resident survey, where that basically is asking for more dialogue with council as we develop policies and weigh issues.
Okay. Barbara had a follow-up.
While you're up there, is it a good time for you to make a few comments to the council about the education of the election system, what you're doing, if that's rolling out as you wanted it to, and let everybody know where you all get that?
Yes. Thank you so much for bringing that up. We are, as of tomorrow, I need to lock in the dates and locations for the 12 community meetings. Those have been sent to you to look at. So again, they're not, I want to make sure, especially those watching online, they're not district town halls. These are 12 meetings that cover the city. We are trying to get at least one of those in every district. I do need to hear from you today or first thing tomorrow, because I need to go to print. I have to traffic this direct-mail piece to our vendor so that it hits homes prior to the meeting starting. So I want to thank Councilmember Rouse and Henley for their time spending, that they spent with Nancy Blument and I to go over all the creative. We've made those changes. They're even better now that I had that input, so thank you for that. And we're excited. We're ready to start the ad campaign and really let everyone know that these meetings are happening. They can also participate virtually, or there's even the option where you could have a watch party at your home. We'll provide all the tools you need to gather your neighbors, your family together, and you can have your own meeting to learn about the election systems and provide input, whatever meets your schedule. A lot of the community meetings are also going to offer childcare. We checked to make sure it was close to transportation, HRT bus stops. So we've really done, I think, an incredible job putting together a schedule that will also be respectful of religious holidays. So we've checked all of those things.
You know, if I could just do a follow-up on that before other questions. You know, I think this is, you know, this study that we're doing now is a short-term study, but I think it has the potential to become the template on how we go forward, you know, and, you know, really show, refine a process that we can take this forward to a lot of other initiatives that come up. And I think it's also a possibility that the public will say, "Oh, boy, they're really listening to us." And I think that's going to be incredibly important. But I think the other thing is, I think what we have here is a tremendous opportunity, you know, with the new district system, with new council members, you know? And I think it was brought up, to get anything done in your district, you're going to have to work collegially and, you know, cooperatively with other council members. And so that is, you know, forgive my perspective, it's a good idea of building strong bonds between us to become a more effective body. And the other thing is, though, you know, we also, once again, in discussing, you know, the results of your meetings that you may have individually, you know, that's why a number of whiles ago, we put in, you know, the ability for, to have liaison reports and to also have discussions, initiatives, and comments that you can bring forward, you know, based on your input, that actually could help craft the ordinances that we need to move them forward as an educated collective body. So I think a lot of positives can happen there, but, you know, but once again, you know, hey, let's be aspirational and see if we can, you know, get something done. Yeah, Sabrina.
Just recently heard from a resident who is concerned about the particular 12 meetings that we are going to conduct across the city. They want to make sure that those meetings produce data and feedback that is representative of the entire community. And so I told them I would bring that forward to those who are in charge of that, to let you know that the citizens are certainly paying attention, and they want to make sure, even with the coordinator and facilitator that is, has been hired to do this job, that it is representative of the entire community. Wanted to share that feedback with you from citizens.
Councilmember, I can address that, too, in case others doing online have the same concern. As part of the contract with the University of Virginia, they will be putting together an assessment of the feedback from those community meetings, but we will be capturing individuals from those meetings who can also participate with the rest of the city in the online survey. So the entire community has a chance to participate in giving their feedback online. The statistically viable direct-mail survey will go to, you know, randomly selected population. You will receive that feedback from the listening session, or, you know, from the meetings separate from the survey data. So that, you're getting a lot of input from the entire community engagement plan for you to assess and evaluate in order for you to make your next steps.
Appreciate that. Just real quick, I appreciate that information, but also keep in mind, everyone does not have access to computers, internet, Wi-Fi. So that is an aspect to also consider, because especially, I know, in talking to seniors, some of them are active online, but not everyone. And so just keep in mind that we have to have other avenues as well to reach out and outreach, even considering the online aspect that you have.
Absolutely. The survey will be made available. If someone needs a print version, they can request that from the city, and we'll make sure they get that.
Yeah, Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, we did take council advice as well. I think a couple of councilmembers mentioned that as we're advertising the survey, the scientifically valid survey instrument, but also the public online tool, and also the in-person meetings, that we reach out to diverse ways of communicating that word out, including talking, listening to like religious media or contacting religious media to get that out there, because that may be a population that we're missing. So we have included that as part of the communication to ensure that we hit a wide breadth of the public to the maximum extent possible, so we can ensure that everybody's getting an opportunity to participate in this.
Chris.
Tiffany, thank you for the presentation, and I'll repeat, your team and city staff did a phenomenal job executing on the February 16 Town Hall in District 8, so thank you. Just a thought to keep in mind, as we are in the midst of this study, as well as potentially changing our election system, that's on the table. We understand 731, not the 10-1, so maybe having an at-large vantage point of how to continue the engagement, so it's not district-specific, just in case, you know, we end up changing our charter and we go to the 731 or alternative system.
Absolutely. We'll always continue to do citywide communications. One of the things I wanted to hopefully get across is that will never go away, and I want to reinforce that. We have citywide issues. Regardless of whether you live in a particular district, you may work in another district, you have a child in another district. So citywide will always exist. This enhancement of district communications is now hitting people in a way that they aren't currently getting. So maybe they're following us on social. They're seeing a lot of things that they go, "This doesn't really impact me." If I can do even more robust marketing to them in that way, because that's how society is going, we could. Yes?
Yes. The mayor.
I just want to mention, this is wonderful that you've put together. I keep hearing you say, "I'm ready to do it if I have the resources." So you have all the data, you have the tools that you can use to make this happen, and it rests upon us to help you get that next step for the resources to make this happen. Because yes, we're quite a few different districts with different needs, but having this intense process that you're doing, reaching out, just like the mayor said, we can then bring it back to the whole council, because again, picking up with Barbara, one person cannot do it alone. So thank you for, you know, what you presented us.
You're welcome.
Yeah, but I just think this is an opportunity to set a path for all future events of engagement, you know, by putting into place a process that really makes the public feel like they are definitely part of the process. Kudos to you and your staff.
Thank you. So to reiterate, I'll come back in a few weeks with what those options could look like, the pros and cons to those particular options, and we can have further discussion, although I know I need to be sensitive to the budget process, too, so maybe a memo or something like that. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, at this time, Kathy Warren, Deputy Director in Economic Development, also Interim Planning Director.
Well, multitasking.
Kathy will give a presentation to council, seeking your direction on what to do with the Freebie Micro Transit Pilot Program as it relates, do we want to continue the pilot? Do we want to table the pilot, or do we want to bring it on as a more robust program? And we'll be seeking your direction as it relates to how we handle the pilot going forward.
Hey, welcome, Kathy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the manager just mentioned, I'm here to provide an update on our Freebie Resort Micro Transit Pilot Program, which we launched last year. I wanted to first... we launched last year. Uh, I wanted to first thank our parking manager, Rob Fries, who has provided oversight on our contract for this pilot project. And, uh, we'll go ahead and jump in. So what is Freebie? This is a pilot project, as we just mentioned, that is supported through the Resort Area Mobility Plan. You recently adopted this plan, uh, as a top priority that came out of the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan. It offers on-demand door-to-door transportation. It was launched on June 15th, 2022, and it's currently still underway. It's geofenced just to the Resort Area Strategic Action Plan area, or the Resort Area SGA. We currently have five Tesla X vehicles. It operates from 11 to 11, seven days per week, and it's year-round. Currently, the pilot project is funded through the Parking Enterprise Fund at a cost of $550,000 for the year. The goals of the Freebie Pilot Program, again, this is part of the city's ramp program and it, which calls for enhanced shared mobility services in the resort area. It provides alternative public transportation options for residents and visitors to conveniently access everything within the resort. It reduces traffic congestion and helps free up limited parking availability, provides a feeder system to and from mass transit. Our transfer center, as you may know, is currently located at the convention center. So when people come in from other cities to go to their jobs, for instance, they then can take a Freebie down into the resort to wherever their place of work is. It's designed to help our businesses by delivering customers right to their front door, and it reduces carbon emissions by operating o- only 100% electric vehicles. Here's just a snapshot of our ridership, uh, June through December 2022. We actually had the highest ridership throughout Freebie's program, and they serve us over, uh, 20 areas. Most of those currently are in Florida, but they're expanding into other states. We surpassed 10,000 passengers in the first full month of service. During our peak season, our wait times averaged 19 minutes. 26% of the rides were picked up under 10 minutes. 61% of the rides were picked up under 20 minutes, and 39% of the rides took over 20 minutes for pickup. Our peak times are Monday to Thursday, 2:00 to 8:00 p.m., and on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, 2:00 to 11:00. And what you're looking at, uh, there on the right portion of the screen is just a dashboard. This is something that our staff has access into Freebie's system so we can constantly pull up, uh, these statistics and look at them and see how we're doing month to month. So who rides Freebie? It's an equitable resource. Everyone within the resort boundary can ride Freebie. A resident, a visitor, a worker, anyone again within that boundary. Our rider demographics are 52% male and 48% female. 21 to 34 age group is the largest age demographic. Local versus non-local, during these months, uh, through December 2022, um, it's, we were about 50/50. So you'll see 48% local riders versus 52% non-local. It has shifted in January and February to be about 70% local riders. And then you'll see there on the right, the heat map, all of the red areas are the, uh, places of highest drop-off and pickup locations. You'll see to the left of the screen, the SeaTac neighborhood, and then of course, areas down in the resort, down toward Rudy Loop, uh, and then, uh, the areas up to the north, uh, the Cavalier Resort, and then, uh, some of these other popular places to eat and stay within the resort. So we can't really talk about Freebie and what it's doing, uh, without someone asking the question about the Atlantic Avenue trolley. This is not all of the trolleys operating throughout the resort area. This is just the one that is a fixed route up and down Atlantic Avenue or Route 30. So we just wanted to give you some statistics here too. It operates May 15th through September 30th each year. Uh, in FY '23, our costs are 1.3 million. We have 511,000 part. That's our share as part of that 1.3 million, uh, which is funded through the TIP fund. The Fairbox captures about 127,000, and then federal and state aid at 687,000. We have seen a decline in ridership over the years, as you'll see on this graph. Uh, we, you'll notice in particular, 2019, uh, we were over 200,000, and you'll see 2020, obviously that was the COVID year, and then 2021, we dipped significantly and we're climbing up, although we haven't made it back to 2019 stats. Key performance indicators, just a comparison here, our cost per ride, uh, for the trolley up and down Atlantic Avenue, $10 per rider. We had 124,650 riders in 2022. Again, we are seeing declining ridership, and it operates May 15th through September 30. On Freebie, our cost per riders, uh, $5.37. Cost per trip, because we typically have more than one rider in the car per trip, is $9.04. Average wait time, 17 minutes. Our total riders just for June through December and with only five cars is 57,200. The average trip length, 2.2 miles, and then again, this operates year-round. So the benefits that, um, are attached to microtransit are that it's flexible, it's scalable, there's no capital investment by the city, low operating costs. We have a very high customer satisfaction rate for Freebie. Provides greater access than the fixed route service. It's equitable access to all riders, promotes commerce, and it, again, eliminates vehicle emissions because of the, the electric vehicles. So today in front of you, for consideration going into the next budget year, uh, we're looking for some direction from council on the future of this program, since it is a pilot program. We can move forward with ending the program. We could keep this program in a pilot status for another year and fund it again through the Parking Enterprise Fund. We could increase Freebie fleet from five to 10 vehicles and fund through the Tourism Investment Program Funds at 1.2 million.
I would mention as well too, for that one, the Parking Enterprise Fund could, if council wanted to, we could absorb the 1.2 million for another year. Yeah. I think we got adequate fund balance, right Kathy?
Yes, sir. Uh, we could consider advertisement on the vehicles from our businesses down in the resort area or elsewhere, which, uh, we have talked to Freebie about this. They, they have done this in other, uh, service areas, and that will reduce the budget by about 10%. What that means then is there's advertising, uh, we can wrap the car in certain advertisements with a, a company or a restaurant, something like that. Or we could reduce the service hours and costs for the trolley service along Atlantic Avenue and allocate that savings to Freebie.
And council, the reason why I, I pointed out that, uh, Parking Enterprise Fund could, um, absorb it for another year is if council wants to enhance the, um, the Freebie and add additional vehicles and incur that additional cost, we may need time to untangle the HRT relationship, right? So it may be that the HRT relationship may still feed a little bit on the TIP fund. You know, if council wants us to, um, untangle that one and move to the enhanced Freebie, we may need a little time to transition both of them. So if we want to go down that path, council could have enhanced Freebie on the Parking Enterprise Fund for another year, and then while we untangle the HRT trolley relationship, then we can move it on in another fiscal year to the, um, TIP fund if council so desires.
Okay, Worth, and then, uh, where's Mary?
Untangled. Mr. DeHany, when you say untangled, that, does that mean go away or modify or, or blend?
Whichever one council wants to do. It could go away, it could be modified, it could be blend. Kathy, is there anything you want to say?
No, that's absolutely correct.
Okay, Rosemary, then Rocky.
As everybody knows, I live right in the resort, and so I see Freebie operating. I had not personally used it, but I have family members that have used it, and, and I, I think it's a good thing. Uh, but my concern is that what is, well, it's still what it meant to do, which is to help us with the parking situation. And parking is the major, major problem down at the resort in, in the summer. But I see it operating in the winter on January and February, when you could roll a bowling ball down Atlantic Avenue and, you know, there's nothing there and there's no traffic. There's plenty of places to park. I just, I'm concerned that it's really not needed year-round. I mean, is there any way we can talk to them and look at them and cutting back? Maybe in- increase the, the service in the summer, since it seems to be so popular, but maybe cut back those winter months when it, it's not solving the parking problem that, because we don't have a parking problem in the wintertime. And it looks to me kind of foolish in the wintertime to see Freebie running all around, giving everybody a free ride when it's not really needed that time of year. So my question is, can we go back and, and look maybe another option? Because, uh, I'm not adverse to increasing the summertime, uh, vehicles. But I think it's, it, it looks very wasteful of us. It looks very wasteful of us in the winter when it doesn't look like there's that big of a need. Now, you mean, somebody's always going to need a ride for, from time to time for free, but, um, this, that's, that, the, the, the big thing, I think, was, was the, the parking situation.
We certainly can look at modifying the hours. Uh, and we can really do it any way you'd like. We could reduce the number of cars in the winter months. We can reduce the hours. We, we can determine what the schedule is. I will tell you that in February, we had over 7,300 rides. So we're still seeing a, a fairly decent ridership. Of course, like I mentioned earlier, though, it's about 70% locals. I know the SeaTac community, the neighborhoods there are, are, uh, definitely tapping into this as a resource to get to grocery stores, places of business.
Okay, Rocky, Barbara, and Michael.
Thank you, Kathy. Very good presentation. And, you know, we keep hearing Freebie, but then the cost of rider is $5.37 and cost per trip is $9.04. And that, that's not free because it has a cost associated with it. And then next, I'm looking at 48% local riders. Well, I don't think the good people of District 1 are being any of that 48%. The good people from Point of View or Sherry Park or Indian Lakes or, or Lake Christopher are riding on this free ride that is provided to the resort area. And I understand the importance of having some apparatus at the resort area, but I can promise you, the good people of District 1 are hurting as well and need a ride. I've heard from several constituents as far up as almost Sparrow Road saying, how can they get down to the courthouse? How can they get down to City Hall? So I, I think it's very important that we do understand that the resort area is critical with parking and overcrowded. But when we have something like this, I, I can say for the good people of District 1, they certainly would appreciate a ride too. So I, I think it's something to take into consideration, but it says Freebie, but I'm looking at $5.37 per rider and $9.04 per trip. That, that doesn't scream Freebie to me. And I think if we're going to have something like this, I would like for the, the good people of District 1 to be able to take advantage of something like this too.
Okay, Barbara and Michael, and then Chris.
Well, sort of combining some of the things I heard from Ms. Wilson and then also some things now from Mr. Holcomb. Um, I, I, I think what it's saying probably in the off-season, that it's a lot of our local people who are using it, which tells us that there are people in that area that, that need that as, as a service. And since it's being funded by the TIP or the Parking Enterprise Fund, then, then it's funded by the tourism industry kind of thing. But from the standpoint of seeing how well this is providing service to some of our locals who need it, when you were first making your presentation, I couldn't help but think about all the folks down in the rural area, many of the older folks who just don't have transportation or goodness sakes, wouldn't drive past that Punggol stoplight because, you know, it's just different. Maybe there's a way to do something like this in some of our other areas to help these folks who don't have transport. Because, you know, as, as I was talking with Tiffany and Nancy, when we were talking about, you know, scheduling these meetings for the, the public, and they said they try to get them on a, a transit rail. Don't forget, nothing below this municipal center, and that's half of the city, has any mass transit whatsoever. So, you know, maybe this is something we need to look at with this program. Is it not only a good program for that area, but are we seeing some needs that tells us that maybe something similar to this might be good at some hours, at some times in other parts of the city? So I, I think it's a good experience for us, and maybe we need to look at a little further.
Okay, we got Michael, Chris, and, uh, Worth, and then Josh. Active discussion.
It's a long lineup. They'll try to keep line short.
Yeah, everybody, everybody else will be.
Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Warren. And I just want to follow up real quick, um, in the interim to just, on what Mr. Holcomb said. I remember when we were first presented with this proposal, uh, expressing something similar about transit for people throughout the city. And, um, I think that there are some, uh, programs and possibly we could explore further with HRT to consider, uh, a variety of different, um, options that will provide a similar kind of transportation options for residents in other parts of the city. Uh, and I encourage everyone to continue to move forward in that direction. The purpose of my question really was to say, I've downloaded the app. I'm, actually haven't used it because every time that I've called for a ride, maybe it's just been the times that I'm doing it is high demand. And so unlike the Uber app where it sort of tells you, correct me if I'm wrong, but unlike the Uber app that, where it sort of tells you how long you can expect to get a ride, it just basically says stand by. And then I think you have to, correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I think you have to stay on the app and keep it open until such time as the ride becomes available, which I never had the patience to do. So that was my experience with it. And I was just wondering if you can provide some insight about the demand? Because based on my experience, there's a very, very high demand, and it, and it looks like it's a demand from locals and from visitors. And so, you know, I think it's actually, when you consider, especially compared to the trolley, and, and again, I was a little cautious about this because I was thinking about the transportation needs of residents throughout the city, and I still am. But I think what we've, what you've proven here through the pilot program is that not only does the, uh, program create efficiencies and the value to provide this sort of transportation and connectivity for residents and visitors, but it also, um, does so, well, it, it, that's just what it does, efficiency and value. So, uh, could you talk a little bit about the demand that you're seeing and how it relates to, um, to the plans moving forward? And, and, and even though I think the Vice Mayor makes a good point about the winter and about different other times, it seems like there's a lot of interest in having these rides, and it's being provided at a reasonable cost. So your thoughts on that?
Well, so I would like to make a comment based on your experience with the app. We do have the, uh, president from Freebie watching. So this is probably all really good feedback for him, and maybe.
A little more work in my opinion. On the other hand, it's free, so maybe you don't expect the same level of, um, service that you get with an Uber or Lyft, but it's a little, it's not really transparent about when you can expect a ride and how to make plans.
Well, hopefully that'll be a change for next year. Um, I will say, when you, we were blown away, as was Freebie, that we hit 10,000 in that first month, rides. They couldn't even believe it. They have service areas down in the Miami area, many different coastal areas in Florida, and we beat all of their existing service areas. That's the reason, the five vehicles, that's the reason why we put 10 in there, because Freebie is saying, if you want to meet your demand based on the numbers we're seeing, you really need to go to 10 cars. So that, that's where that. So that's where that 10 comes from. So we are seeing a great demand. We're also hoping that at some point, whether we reduce the number of vehicles or the service hours during the off-season, we're hoping to really tap into the Central Beach area and help with the Sports Center to get those people back and forth from the hotels, as opposed to them driving their car and parking it at the Sports Center, where we're also seeing a high demand for parking.
And I'll just follow up, I know there's a lot of other people to talk. You know, we're talking about maybe scaling down in the winter or during the off-season, but at the same time, we're doing our best to create the environment where we don't have an off-season.
Right.
So I think we should be mindful about that when we consider the next steps. Because, for example, I hope that it's, I'll go back to that math. Are people using it from the Sports Center? I mean, we know that that's a huge success, that people are visiting and they're enjoying that facility. And so I hope those families are taking advantage of this service as part of their visit experience here, not only during the summer, but through the shoulder season and during the off-season.
They are using it in the Central Beach, and I'll just point out here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Convention Center, Sports Center, and the Vibe District. And we're hoping, if we continue the program, we need to do a better job pushing it out at the Sports Center with our visitors, so that they can, we're really seeing some issues with parking at the Sports Center, because it's so popular. This might help with that.
Okay, Chris, Worth, and then Josh.
Thanks, Kathy. One of the demographics I've heard from is the seniors. And kind of piggybacking off Councilman Holcomb, I'm not as enthusiastic for District Eight, but he makes some really good points. When we were briefed on this during the rack, one of the things that popped out was the consistency in October, November, December, not historically high tourism months. And so I'd be interested in looking at expanding the services across the city. And to Councilman Holcomb's point, it's not free. And I think we have to do our best to explain to the general public that even though they don't own a hotel or maybe a restaurant in the resort area, as someone that does have three restaurants outside of the resort area, every time a customer comes in, I am paying into that tip fund. And so it's not free, but you may have residents in eight, two, or one, or Rose Hall, four, that own small businesses, that go to the movies, and they are contributing to this program.
Agreed.
Good point, Worth, and then Josh, and then Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Worth, for the report. I know, everyone, this is a pilot program. But to address Mr. Holcomb, Ms. Henley, and everyone else, Mr. Belucci, Mr. Taylor, I think it's the feeling of the Resort Advisory Committee that all of the cities should be, have access to our resort. And so microtransit is important to transportation in our city, also for employees to get to and from the resort. So I think we should very much look into expanding this operation around the city, whether it be Hampton Roads Transit, or Freebie, or any other method, if that's important. We all need to have access to the resort and across the city.
Right, okay. Josh and Amelia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Kathy, for the presentation. I guess benefit of going near last and having smart people around you, you pretty much hit all my questions. But I did have one that I had for you, Kathy. Has it coordination with HRT? Has that been looked at, kind of serving that last mile? And I don't know, I don't know if there's anything there, but have you looked at it?
We have talked to them throughout the season about this, and how it could operate in connection with the trolley operating down in the resort area. We have more work to do this year with that piece.
Okay, and then just a follow-up, and to Councilmember Taylor's point. This is a great example, considering you said, what, 48% of the people using Freebie are locals. It's a great example of tourism dollars paying for things that benefit residents.
Amelia?
Okay, with that 48%, most of them are in SeaTac, and along that area. It's not impacting the rest of the city. So it's very important to what Chris and them said, that we do have this. But HRT had began looking at, like, mini buses, mini trances, and I'm the Consulier, so on, for HRT. And we are discussing this. Next thing about the Freebies and the trolley. Trolley is more nostalgia. So you have those who just want to slowly go down and not get in this big bird that hops over in the in and out. I've watched it go, and it's pretty fast to get there and get out. But you still have that generation, the boomerang generation, that come to Virginia Beach and spend money. And they would still love to have that, you know, trolley effect. So we'll work to see how we can balance both, and very important for the other parts of the city. Because even though District Four has a dichotomy of the CBDA central, we still have the historic on their part, that some of them cannot even get to Williams Farm.
Thank you.
That discussion needs to be continued, but thank you so much for this. It's exciting.
Okay, anybody else?
You know, let me just say that, you know, once again, transportation is a major problem, not only in public transportation in Virginia Beach, but throughout the 757. One of the problems that we have in Virginia Beach is that we're not built on any type of grid system that lends itself favorably to public transportation, because public transportation have to get the people to a destination where they got to go. And it's almost impossible to have those. But that being said, the future, anyway, you know, with the looking at, you know, with the autonomous vehicles that could get into the neighborhoods and get elderly people, pick them up, get them to their doctor appointment. We don't have that capacity now. But, you know, my suggestion, that, you know, this is still, you know, regarded as a pilot program. And, you know, I think we can pursue it maybe in terms of a compromise, have 10 cars throughout the summer, and then knock it down to five, you know, during the off-season, and to see how it builds up. And then the thing about the thing is, you know, to Rocky's point and Chris's point, you know, if we build a foundation of success with this thing, then possibly can justify us, you know, spreading it out, you know, to the rest of the districts. You know, certainly, you know, when I was the Centerville rep, we want to get people there. And then from Rose Hall and, you know, all the other, you know, parts of the city, to, you know, to the oceanfront. But once again, you know, I think the recommendation is, you know, as long as we're having a funding source for it, let's see where it takes us, and, you know, still consider a, you know, model that we're looking at, you know, on a trial basis. Your thoughts, Patrick?
All right, so I think what I just heard, but I mean, before I get into that, too, just understand that council did authorize a microtransit program, probably HRT, that I think is in the old Bayside District.
Yes, sir.
And we should be coming back to report out to council.
Coming out to report to council on the success of that. Thank you, Councilmember Holcomb. And that could be part of the future expansion plan for the rest of the city. Because I think that's something, as Dr. Ross Hammond indicated, is high on the mind of HRT and its board right now. Okay, so I think what I heard, Mayor, is that you said focus on increasing Freebie, five to 10, but then in the shoulder season, possibly seeing if it's possible for Freebie to bring it down to five, right? And seeing what that could look like from a proposal standpoint and a cost standpoint.
And, you know, to Michael's, you know, point that, you know, if we do become more and more of a year-round destination, then we can, you know, certainly increase it at that time.
Okay.
You know, so allow the pilot program for the ability to grow as it, you know, catches on with popularity.
So we're moving it from a pilot program to 10 in peak times, and then down to five in non-peak times, is what I'm hearing.
With that, is anybody object to doing that?
Consider that.
Yeah, excuse me, yes. It would be likely somewhere within those months. We will come back to you and let you know exactly what those months would be. But depending on what our festival's schedules are, that's when, that's how we would look at that.
The parking program that's out the oceanfront.
Yes.
Street parking.
Yes.
And we'll evaluate how best to fund that, like, park enterprise fund. The other question I have, counsel, is the trolley. Continue as is with the trolley, or work to eliminate, reduce hours? Because it'll be expensive to carry both, counsel.
What would the reduction of hours be like?
We can get more information from you. So this is what I'll say.
Yeah.
I think we need more information before.
As I mentioned before, we got enough money in the Park Enterprise Fund to probably cover it, to cover an enhancement of Freebie, and how we just talked about it for another year. We'll work on doing all the things you said about Freebie here. And then we'll also look at the trolley program and bring back to you all for your future review and consideration, a plan to eliminate, reduce, or leave it the same, so you all can review that and let us know where you want us to go.
Yeah, you know, kind of a, you know, a swan analysis on that.
Okay, all right.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much. Okay, City Council Liaison Reports. Anybody?
Barbara?
I have gone to two committees, the Open Space Committee and the Reven Committee, who are planning to have a joint meeting in March. It's their idea, which I think is really good, because these two committees, I think, see the open space programs regeneration as an opportunity to do the work that they're doing. And so I think that's pretty exciting. They're right now involved in determining, you know, what criteria they'll be using to recommend open space purchases and so forth. So that will be a special meeting that they will be having at their March, in their March meetings. Also, back in December, I asked to be able to move forward to do an update to the Albemarle Symposium, which we had done first in 2018. We weren't able to do an update during the pandemic. But we are having an update symposium. It will be March 31st at the Convention Center from 9:00 to 4:00. I hope you all have gotten something on it by this time, because now the registration is out there. And I really think it would be extremely valuable for as many of you who can to come to do a great running process. Don't forget that 67% of the city of Virginia Beach drains to the Albemarle. I think the tendency is to always think Chesapeake. But most of the city, two-thirds of the city drains to the Albemarle. And being able to not only get an update on all of the data that's been generated, that we have generated since 2018, which is enormous, but also continuing this relationship with the other people in the Albemarle watershed is so important. So I hope you'll put that on your calendar, and I hope that you.
Any other, Amelia?
Yes, we're continuing the housing advisory. We did a survey this time instead of the in-person. That was one, and that went pretty good. I'm along with Jennifer, the Consulier, on for Something in the Water. And we've had a couple of meetings, and just a few things to mention for transportation. We plan to use the Shuttle Operation Amphitheater to the oceanfront and have the ride share. For public safety, we have a unified command and structure. Planning is holistic and include outside partners. So we're creating a unified event action plan to coordinate emergency response at the festival and across the oceanfront. Communication, the flow of the information from the City of Virginia Beach Communication will post logistic-related information. And the outside festival footprint, traffic, and map transportation will all be in place. Coordinating with Something in the Water Festival to share city posts, and the city will share Something in the Water Festival posts. Developing communication plans for residents. One of their themes is Beach is Open for Business. So April 14th, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m., Economic Development Community Event at Mount Trashmo, which gives a lot of our local vendors and nonprofits an opportunity to still be a part of this festival, kind of like a peak before the main one. And then the oceanfront parks, the mansion, the 17th, 24th, and 36th parks would be in place. And they plan to have two very large stages facing each other, one around the Third Street and one at the 10th. Other little bit that they mentioned, there will be continuous pre-festival tours. And the production team meeting started from March 1st to 3rd. We're still asking them, who are the headliners? And they know, but they were very tight-lipped. And they said that, once they let us know, the balance of the tickets will literally fly out the door. So we're waiting to hear that part from them. And also the mention about the council members coming for the tour. And I thank Amanda, who already are getting them enlisted for us to do a tour at that time. It sounds very exciting, and we're waiting to hear who the headliners. Especially Rack, they're saying, we need to know this, because, you know, for setting up that way. And of course, Beach It has already said theirs. Remember the commercial about tomatoes? Some of you may not remember that. Anticipation.
Making you wait.
Is making you wait. So it's that feel. The other thing, there is a group that sent us, and they have their 757 event, and I put it in your packet, on March 10th. There are new event venue on Atlantic Avenue at 2014. The ribbon cutting is on March 10th at 1:00 p.m. If any other council members have a minute to go down. This is the first of, they're saying they're the only African-American new venue on the oceanfront. So it'll be good to have, you know, a little diverse group come over just around 1 o'clock, March 10th, for the event, 2014 Atlantic Avenue.
Thank you. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to share that on Thursday, March 9th, at 6:30 p.m., the Human Rights Commission is hosting a community conversation about race, racism, and bias, and their effect on human rights, and viable paths to move forward further respect and appreciation of all cultures. It's at Greymon High School this Thursday at 6:30 p.m., moderated by Kathy Lewis.
Okay, thank you. And who else said that? Rocky?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Two weeks ago, I was home on COVID, and I want to thank everybody for the well wishes and all the support throughout that, and especially the citizens of District One and all their "get well soon" wishes. And I know we have 10 districts in the city, but there's only one number one, and I'm proud to represent them. So one thing that came up when I was watching this at home is, I want to let the citizens know that I watched the council on the Tuesday I was out, and we understand that the acoustics are bad. And for those listening at home, we're working on this. Our IT folks are aware of the problem, and I promise you, we got some of the best IT folks in the business, and we're going to get the problem fixed. But I had heard the complaints, but when I was at home listening to it, I actually heard it firsthand. And we understand the acoustics need some work, and we're going to, and we're going to do our best to get that fixed. So just be patient with us. Now, on another note, we have a couple of awards and recognitions. And I just saw Deputy City Attorney Rod Ingram in here. And Deputy City Attorney Rod Ingram was inducted as Virginia Law Foundation Fellow. Deputy City Attorney Rod Ingram is one of the 2023 inductees of the Virginia Law Foundation Fellows Program. Fellows are recognized for leadership in their practices, communities, and the Commonwealth. He joins this group of more than 600 legal practitioners. That's awesome, and a big shout-out to Rod and the work he's done to get on that. It's a very good accomplishment. And the next one is our very own Eileen Smith, the Director of Department of Human Services. She was selected by her alma mater, Old Dominion University, as a 2023 Darden College Education and Professional Studies Fellow. Smith and the other recipients were recognized at an award luncheon on February 21st. So congratulations to those folks on those awards and those recognitions.
Point of pride for the city. Anybody else? Yes?
Yes, one thing, the Read Across America. We have quite a few of our council people and our city manager go out and read across. I mean, I was over at Newtown. I mean, I was over at, um, Newtown, then out at Sea-Tac, then back at Newtown, and I kept bumping into other council members. So it just shows we're out into the community and thank you.
Yeah, Chris.
Last but not least, um, February 26, 1987, President Ronald Reagan officially declared Proclamation 5613, making March National Dis, Disabilities Awareness Month. And I know we've had several groups come before us advocating for dis, disabled and individual disabilities, so just wanted to make that.
No, and that, you know, that's it. And then, you know, we're proud of the fact that we're considered the caring city that we are, but, you know, thank you for noticing that. I'll tell you what, we have a couple items on the, period. At this point, we got a couple items, uh, to talk about as part of our discussion. Uh, anybody up for about a five-minute break? I think we're running okay time-wise.
Wait, before we go, we need to thank the city, thank the mayor. We had the president in last week and even though there was traffic later, it went pretty smoothly. And, uh, President, uh, mentioned about Mia Dyer of having that opportunity. Of all cities, we were chosen. So I think we need to give a round of applause for that.
No, thank you. But, but I tell you what, again, who deserves the applause is, you know, our city staff. You know, we were kind of notified about this on Friday afternoon that it was a go and I didn't even know I was invited till Monday. And, uh, but once again, it, you know, it was just wonderful watching the integration and the point of pride that we have in our city of putting such a monumental event together in a rapid, uh, fashion, uh, you know, between, you know, the, uh, you know, police, our motorcycle police and the police officers and the parks and rec, getting the facility ready and everything, you know, you, that, you know, the point is a lot of the, um, direction that came, came from the White House. Uh, but, you know, we were the ones that, uh, go through Patrick and his magnificent staff and, uh, you know, was able to make that such a great, great event for our city. Okay? So at this point, let's take a little break and, you know, come on back and we'll have some discussions.
The first item of discussion is going to be an opportunity. You know, the chamber has invited us to participate with them in going to Charleston, you know, on a trip. And, you know, the thought and the recommendation is by policy, you know, I would, I am willing to sponsor any council member that would like to go in terms of, you know, whatever. But once again, I think this is an opportunity, I think Vice Mayor brought it up, you know, to show them that yes, we are regional. But the other thing is, you know, to get together a little bit of a professional and social environment in terms of what's going on. But, you know, but once again, do you have any comments? Okay. Okay. Okay, no, okay, Rosemary.
Chamber does this every year, but I think this year is an exceptional visit because Charleston and where we live relate so well together. They have a port, we have a port, and they're doing a lot of exciting things that we should, you know, are going to be looking at as a region, like the airport expansion and their growth. And I talked to the manager about it, and he really thought that this was a good opportunity for those people who chose to go if they would like to go. So it's, I think it's an unusual time that I, that so many people would like to go, but I think it's a good time. And it's, it shows that we are part of the region. Sometimes we get accused of not caring about what's happening with the region, and this is a really good time for us to demonstrate that. So I think it'll be good. I don't know if Patrick wanted to say anything about it.
I think the Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor hit the nail on the head. It would be a good opportunity for council to collaborate with other politicians in Hampton Roads, but also the politicians in Charleston to kind of learn and share information on things that they do and things that we do as well, and maybe things that we can learn that is applicable to the regional economy, but also the economy here in Virginia Beach.
Yeah, Barbara.
When is it and how much will it cost?
It's after the budget vote.
And how much does it cost?
Yeah, I think it's May 10th through the 11th, it's after the, after the budget vote. And I'm not sure what the cost is, but I think it costs around thirty-two hundred bucks.
Yeah.
What is this hotel?
It's, I think it's per person, I think it's per person.
How much? I didn't hear that.
Thirty-two hundred dollars.
Thirty-two hundred dollars per person?
Yes.
Who pays it?
Not including airfare or stuff.
And that's, who's paying it?
Yeah, that would be a city expense.
If the council agrees, it's a, if the council unanimously agrees, it can be a city expense. If council doesn't agree under your policy, you have to, you have to formally vote.
Okay, yeah, but once again, you know, this is why we put it here for discussion in terms of an opportunity. And, you know, this could be considered an opportunity for us, you know, whether, I don't know if we would have to vote on it or what for an allocation or something like that, but it has the potential of being money well spent. But once again, one of the reasons, you know, you know, I, these are things I get to go to as mayor, but the other thing is if it does have value, and you know, don't forget, we're in a unique situation with five brand-new members on a new district system. You know, sometimes getting away and getting to know each other a little bit better, getting to know the other council folks from the area and, you know, things of that nature, you know, you know, just a thought. But once again, this is why we're talking about it now, open for the discussion. Josh?
And I think it's, I think it's a great idea to have as many of us go as possible. I know in prior years, there was some question because there was not the level of representation from Virginia Beach that there should have been. And it is a great opportunity for us to, for lessons learned in a thriving metropolitan area like Charleston and to interact with other regional leaders. I've registered and was prepared to pay on my own, but if there's, you know, if there's assistance available, that would certainly make my wife happy, so thank you.
Yeah, Michael in North Worth.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say that I had an opportunity to attend this visit last year, although it was funded outside of the city. And much to my frustration, although I understand, many from the chamber didn't categorize my visit as being on behalf of the city of Virginia Beach in spite of the fact that I am a council member and I was there as a participant on the trip. And although I was frustrated by that, I also understand where they were coming for, from, because they were looking for a visible partnership where the city sent council members on behalf of the city to participate in the visit. So I think that caused some confusion. But having gone on the trip last year, I can tell you that it was incredibly valuable to have connectivity and conversations with policymakers, business leaders, nonprofit leaders, stakeholders throughout our region to contemplate what another community is doing well, maybe where they're falling short, how that relates to what we're doing here. And I think it would be a really valuable exercise, not only for our council members to connect with other folks from our region, but, but to even connect with each other as we consider, you know, best strategies for how to move forward as a community. And so based on my experiences and my understanding about the trip, I think it's a really a worthy and good investment and would pay off in dividends from relationships, from information, from knowledge, and in collaboration moving forward.
And if, and if I could just say as a point of clarification, you know, last year I was still kind of recovering from this little thing called open heart surgery and, you know, a couple of other things. And I was advised that, you know, hold off a little bit on travel. But let me just say this in terms of travel. You know, I as mayor have an option to go to a lot of things, council mayors and doing all this other stuff and, you know, fly around and do things. I don't do that, you know, the mayor of Virginia Beach, and this is where I think we all have to be. So the point is though, but, you know, the thing is, you know, I look at this as an opportunity to help, but, but once again, I just, you know, see this as a helpful thing. You know, let's face it, they don't exactly knock us over with salaries, do they, folks? But the point is if you have an advantage to work for the city and do something good for the city, and that would actually, I believe, being an investment for the city into determining the best practices of other cities that have similar characteristics. And, but don't forget, you're also going to have members of the business community from Virginia Beach, from this region there, that you're going to be able to rub elbows with and do some incredibly good things. So, but once again, I think the opportunity, you know, should be, you know, be afforded to you, and I hope, you know, the council would consider, you know, acknowledging that some, a number of us going would be beneficial, not only to the individuals who go, but to this body and to this city. Yes?
Just one last statement here. I agree with Councilman Shulman, I also have signed up. I think Charleston is a tertiary market like ours, coastal southern city, it's got a navy, it's got a port, it's got a lot of things going for it, it's the darling, and I think we're in the same situation here in Hampton Roads and certainly Virginia Beach. So that's why I signed up. That being said, I'm happy to get full reimbursement, but would also propose, like at my work, I could go 50% and maybe the city could go 50%.
Well, I'll tell you what, you know, this is things that we, you know, but, you know, let's get it out there. You know, once again, you know, one of the, you know, the important thing is, you know, team building, consensus building, and, you know, just working collaboratively with each other. But the other thing is too, you know, when you come in, you know, there's a learning curve when you've come on first to that city council. And, you know, I had my learning curve back in 2004, and things have changed. But the other point being that as we get to know each other, and I think it was highlighted before, that we're going to have to work collaboratively to work not only within our districts, but within, you know, the needs of the city and go and see how other cities work and function and get to meet folks, I think it just, it's an educational experience, I think, worth undertaking. Okay?
Like to go as well. It's talking about ongoing learning, lifelong learning, and never know too much. Just going to that DM, we went to the VML, just that communication right there was very important, made new friends across Franklin and other areas. So, yes, I would like to go.
Okay, great. Okay, so I guess, you know, if anybody interested, I think the best course to do this, you know, just to, you know, for transparency or everything, have people get in touch with Amanda, you know, you know, who wants to go, we can calculate things and then have a discussion and, you know, maybe some type of approval process.
So, I am, so we are, your point easier to clearly understand, there is unanimous support among the body to authorize reimbursement for anyone on the body to, to travel and be reimbursed at city expense. Is that, is that correct? Well, if, if, if you all agree by unanimous consent, you can do it. If there is any objection, then you'd have to go out and do a formal vote.
I'm sorry, but I think it changes the policy because we've got a travel policy, and I think we really have to look at that. I don't know, it seems to me we're doing a lot of things with that.
No, but once again, I understand, Barbara, but this is, I think, you know, my discretion to make a recommendation on this.
My discretion is.
Okay. Well, if necessary, let's find out who wants to go.
We can have an item, we can have an item for you for the agenda for, for the next meeting.
Would that be okay with everybody? And then, once again, once we figure out how many want to go, we'll, we'll actually have, you know, a number that we can discuss and vote on it in public and with the explanations of what we'll go. That, that's the rule we'll take.
Fair enough.
Okay? All right, moving on.
If, if we can know, do you want who's going included in the item or just it's approved for whoever, whoever elects to go?
I think you just approve whoever likes to go.
Yeah. You know, that, you know, that'd be it. And, you know, perhaps in, you know, drafting the ordinance, you know, we can actually, you know, maybe some justification on it, you know, you know, the intent of what we're trying to do, you know, that type of thing. Okay? All right, moving on now. You know, this is, you know, a, a point that, you know, a clarification. You know, once again, you know, I think we as a council all agree that public engagement and public enhancement and, you know, getting out there, you know, you know, the dynamics of our body has changed, you know, with the, you know, with the district system right now. And, you know, community engagement is going to be at the forefront. And I know this was a topic they, a couple council retreat discussions, and, you know, there were some positives and negatives. But once again, if we go forward with this, I think it is important that we as a body have a discussion about some of the merits what's going on and what, what some of the things that Amanda is going to have to know, you know, going forward in terms of the details and, you know, some of the expenses and things that we're going to be incurring. But once again, I'll open it up, you know, for discussion right now. But you all have, you know, some guiding questions that we have from Amanda right in front of you, if we could take a look at them. You know, once again, it is your option as individual council members if you want one or not. If you could choose to have some help, you know, the degree that you can utilize them with limits for now. Once again, let's understand, you know, this is the first year of this. And then once we can, you know, this can almost be like a semi-pilot program. And then we can also, you know, if, you know, a year from now, determine whether it's working the future needs and things of that nature. Okay? But once again, the question, will each individual council member be signing their legislative aides' timesheet verifying the number of hours worked? I do not want to be responsible for certifying each legislative aide will be working remotely or directly for the individual council members. So once again, there are people that, you know, that do want to have aides. Are you willing to put a signature on, on their time card? Okay, anybody object to doing that? Barbara?
I'm just going to go on record because you know where I stand on this. John Moss and I had had a clarifying resolution on last June 22nd agenda. I've got copies of all of that for you all and transcripts of that meeting. We did defer it because there were some people who felt it needed to have a public comment and discussion. And I have to tell you, I am just extremely concerned about how many things we are doing that have not, that have not been vetted. This was never vetted. These were the kinds of questions that should have been answered before anything was ever approved. Anyway, the, the resolution that we had before the council was that we were not going to be having individuals. We did agree to defer that for more discussion. Unfortunately, it was never brought back to council until the retreat, which certainly wasn't allowing any other discussion. I'm just extremely concerned that this was not done in a fashion that I think it should have been done in. Whether or not I have an aide is not an issue right now. I'm real concerned about this process that didn't follow our processes. But anyway, I'm just going on record to say I just, I don't think this has come about in a fashion that it should have. And I'm, I'm going to have a very hard time ever getting over the fact that this took this, this rag. And I think from the standpoint of any allocation of funding for it, it wasn't done in the budget, it wasn't clear what was happening. I can assure you that any reconciliation letter this year is going to be closely examined by me to make sure I know what we're approving. But anyway, this has been an experience that I don't think is one of our best.
And if I could, you know, just say, because I was, you know, a part of the decision two retreats ago, and then I had to take a phone call from the governor and some other things at the last retreat, so I did not partake of the discussion. But I think, but once again, you know, this, the way I look at this is the optics of being a policy decision. But once again, as we are here determining the costs and things and the nature of it, you know, that can certainly be also part of our budget, you know, considerations, which would be, you know, public going forward. You know, once again, this is a, you know, you know, a type of thing, yes, we are certainly accountable to the public. But the other thing is too, you know, we make, we're a decision body. And as part of our policy, we do come up with policies and procedures that allow for, you know, the flow of things, you know, to, you know, make us a more effective and efficient unit. But in terms of, once we start getting into the actual costs and everything, I am sure that's going to be part of the budget discussion that'll be out there. And, you know, so, you know, at this point, if it's okay, I'll just, you know, go through, you know, Amanda's list, so at least we get a clarification about the path that we're going to be taking. Because we're going to have to make some decisions on hours and, you know, some of the other things. But once again, that's why we're as a body talking, you know, you know, to the public that's being transmitted now. But don't forget, we're going to have public budget hearings where people can come out and speak for it or against it.
Then this will not be approved until it's approved in this year's budget?
Well, we got, we got to, you know, come up with the allocations, correct? You know, what's the, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to take a moment just to, first of all, let's address that question. This was already approved in last year's budget in the fiscal year 2223. It was part of the reconciliation and the funds are already available. We did the vacancy savings from personnel. So the manager, and he could speak more directly to it, reallocated a number of the hours available for the city workforce to make these positions available, although they haven't been, they haven't been filled.
We didn't execute them yet.
We haven't executed them, although as the manager has pointed out to us many times before, we're well within our rights to execute, to execute them, and there's nothing, including the resolution reference, that would prevent us from doing so. And so I really think that's an important point. The other thing to note is that, and we can, we've debated the merits of this many times, I don't think it's necessary here, but you just heard a presentation earlier about the residents and the citizens' request for more district-specific engagement. And allowing council members the option of having a, a person to be responsive to constituent concerns and issues and to research policy matters and to help the council member more fully connect with the district they serve would go a long way toward fulfilling that request and that, and that need that we've heard expressed by the citizens. I want to emphasize again that any council member who chooses not to avail themselves of this opportunity is free to, to not do so. But to suggest that there's something improper about the process that brought us here is, frankly, it's not authentic and it's not honest with the public because we've been transparent and open throughout this entire process. In fact, I think exceedingly deferential to the council member who's raised objections by not fulfilling this to date. And I think it's time that we allow council members and extend the respect and courtesy that we each desire, that we each deserve as elected representatives of the people of the city to make the resources available to us that we've determined can best serve the people who have chosen us to represent them. And I think that we really need to go ahead and answer these questions and get clarity and move forward to allow those council members. And I haven't personally decided whether I'm going to bring someone on or not because it all depends on finding the right person, the right person for the district that I serve, the right person for District Three. But that shouldn't preclude anyone else around the table who might have that person already in mind, perhaps, the opportunity to do that, to better serve their constituents, to better connect with the public, and to better connect the public and the people they serve with the people who work for the city and the various departments within. So I, I think we need to go ahead and get these questions answered and be very clear that we're not in need of any additional authorization. The authorization already exists. It's been in, in place since we adopted the budget, and it's been in place since July 1 of this year, pardon me, of last year. And so let's go ahead and get these things clarified and allow people to move forward if they'd like to. Is there anything that I said that was not accurate, Mr. Mayor?
My understanding, what you spoke is accurate.
Yes, Barbara?
Well, I've, I've just been told that I was not honest because the, the language that was in that reconciliation letter just said we needed assistance, A S S I S T A N C E. It did not say we wanted individual persons. It was not until May 27th, after the budget was adopted, that we got this memo from the city manager that said we need to decide and, based on consultation with Mayor Dyer and Vice Mayor Wilson, it's recommended that we hire the city council assistants as temporary workers through the city's temporary services contract with Abacus and so forth. And so he was asking for direction to see if that's what the council wanted. And this was never acted on because we did have the, the resolution in June saying, don't do this, but that was deferred for more public discussion. So I don't think this has really ever been approved. So I, I'm sorry if you think it's dishonest if I just ask questions because I said it wasn't clear. But I really think this memo of May 27th, 2022 is what we're looking at now because it's, is this what you want to do? Because that language in the reconciliation letter suggested that the, that there should be executive assistants. And I took it to mean what the city manager did, and that was he designated an additional person in his office to help us with independent concerns. It was to provide the members of city council with administrative and clerical support staff and executive, A S S I S T A N C E. That's what the reconciliation letter said. And so I really think if this is what we're going to, and if these people are going to be hired from a temporary work system, I mean, this is what we have to answer because this is what has not been clarified. I don't believe, and that's what the follow-up memo resolution in June was Mr. Moss and my reaction to this. And that was deferred indefinitely for more discussion.
But, yeah, and let me just say this, and, you know, speaking to the council members and, you know, over the last couple of years, there seemed to me to be an overwhelming desire by a number of them to move forward with this. And, but once again, what we're trying to do is establish a personnel policy that would provide us an ability to be more effective and efficient. And so at this point, if it's with the agreement of council, just go forward. So let's get the points of clarification and, you know, some of the ground rules going, you know, so that hopefully we can come to a better, you know, strive to consensus on this. Question, is each legislative aide restricted to work more than 20 hours a week? Okay? And here is the associated costs, you know, that are damned there. Amanda?
I just said no more than 20 hours.
No more than 20 hours a week. Patrick?
In November, we did clarify as well that your legislative aide, because of the child responsibilities that a mayor may possibly work more than that. So I think council needs to understand that if that's, we're moving forward with this as well.
Mayor should have full time.
And, you know, or, you know, whatever, but, you know, once again, you know, the But, you know, once again, you know, the type of thing could be, we're using an agency, correct? So, you know, so, here's the thing, even though we're saying 20 hours, you know, and, you know, being a former hospital executive that used temporaries, we just pay them for what was worked for, what was needed. You know, sometimes 20 hours is, you know, appropriate, but maybe sometimes it's not. You know, just a thought. You know, but once again, at least for now, could we at least agree to cap it on 20 hours?
Yeah.
Except for you, man.
Yeah, except for me. My part-time job makes me so part-time sometimes.
I have a quick question about that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So does that mean that they would be, they wouldn't necessarily be guaranteed 20 hours a week, it would just be up to 20 hours a week?
Yeah, that, you know, I think we can determine that. You know, what's the thoughts about, you know, should we just have a cap of 20 hours a week, or make it a 20-hour minimum, or, you know, what?
Cap up to.
Yeah, a cap up to.
A cap.
Yeah.
Because we are going to be accountable for, you know, signing their hours.
They're going to have to sign off on. Okay. All righty. And then we got into things that, you know, with the, you know, expenses, you know, with the laptops and phones and everything, and, you know, those are on your pages, and that would be worked into, you know, you know, what the ultimate cost will, you know, you know, cell phones, office supplies. With cell phones, which computer would you like to provide to the legislative aides? My request is that they each be offered the same type of device.
That makes sense.
Okay. You know, is that one of the standard issues that we get?
Yeah, this is standard.
Well, there's multiple offerings, so, and the costs associated with each offering, so just need some direction on which device you all would like.
Mayor, and I don't, we can, we can set that.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, at this, do we need this information right now?
I mean, I think, I think we do need to understand that we're going to do this job in certain devices, right? And it's likely that they probably need a laptop, a Surface, or, and probably a phone, because everything they do in city business is going to be foible. Right? So we want to have a place that we can extract that foible information to be, be in compliance with all the public records laws of Virginia. Yeah, so I think what we need council to understand is that, are we providing, we probably, unless council says otherwise, will provide them a phone and some device to read city emails, like a laptop or something, and we'll give the most cost-effective version of that.
That makes sense.
Okay. Dinner's. All right, and then the other thing is city hall security. Will legislative aides be allowed in the city council office during closed sessions?
Mayor, I'm not sure what the intent of the question is, but I think that if it's that, I think legislative aide should be allowed to have access to the city council offices, the office space. But in terms of being present during closed session discussions, if that was the intent of your question, I do not think that that.
I agree with.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they should be, you know, around for closed sessions, you know? Yes.
I agree with that as well, and tangentially, I think we need to think about confidential and/or privileged information that comes into our purview to make sure that that information is protected.
So, just, and me just spitballing this, to see how this will possibly work in my mind, right? We're working on putting Lanell ad accessible locks on every council member door, it's just with supply chain issues, it's been delayed, right? So we're working on getting that done. And to my mindset, the only people who will have access to the council member's space will be the council member and whoever they bring on as their legislative aide. The legislative aide will not have access to any other council member's space, the council member won't have access to another council member's space. Amanda Markin, I'll probably keep access in case you want to drop something off or pick something up for you all, right? And then, from my understanding, if we're having a closed session, aides stay in designated aide spot, but they're not here. As it relates to the Friday package, the council package we all give you, we're printing one package to send to the council member. The council member disseminates that information as they see fit to their aide. Mark.
Okay.
So I have a quick question. Do we have, do any of us have one of these aides now, or no? So nobody should have someone going in and out so far? This is brand new.
There's currently no council aides right now, right? But, you know, if council members can have individuals go back, for council members escort people back and forth there all the time.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and then the next question is about badge access to building one.
To me, the only, only place they'll have badge access to is the publicly accessible spaces that's open to the public now, and to the council member's office back there.
Yes.
And probably access to getting 2034, but not to get any at places in the city. So it'll be around the council suite areas where they will have access.
Also, Mayor and I would need.
Yes, understanding that both the mayor and, yeah, and the same access that you, all council members have as the mayor's, everybody can access the mayor and the vice mayor's area as well, so the aides will have access to that as well.
Okay. Those are some of the clarifying questions. Let me, like, once again, you know, I think if we look at this, is that we are a body in transition in many ways. New voting system, new public, you know, accountabilities and things of our nature. You know, if we can build a better mousetrap, let's give it a try. Okay? Hey, Amanda, you need anything else on that? All righty. All right, but, okay, does anybody else have any discussion or comments they want to bring up? Rosemary?
Rod Ingram is working on a resolution about the 250th anniversary coming up, and it's going to have the Historic Preservation Commission very actively involved. And also, I think Mark Reed will kind of be our point person to work with that. So I'm not quite sure everything that Rod's doing that, or if Rod wants to say anything about it, but.
You've accurately summarized.
Is that okay?
It's the 250th anniversary of America's United States.
Okay, so we'll have that soon.
Soon.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. And just one other thing, we were asked, we're going to have an initiative moving forward. The American Cancer Society asked us to have an initiative, you know, Mayors Against Cancer, and I'm certainly going to invite the vice mayor to join. All the mayors in the 757 I asked are going to be willing to work to bring something forward in the near future. I promised Tiffany we would wait till well after the state of the city, you know, before we do the Mayors Against Cancer Initiative, do PSAs and things of that nature. Our region has a high incidence of minority prostate, rectal, and breast cancer that's disproportionate to the rest of the country. So all the mayors, you know, are on board, definitely, and there will be more to follow. And, you know, and then the initiative may go from 757 to the Commonwealth, and they may be willing to do a national program for, you know, getting a select officials behind this great event.
That's fantastic.
All right, at this point, council agenda review.
I am here to give you good news. So far, on the agenda, you know, not counting the public hearings and all of that, we only have one item with more than one speaker, and that's number five. And then, speaking of number five, there's been tremendous amount of work that's been going on with the PPEA. First of all, I want to thank Councilman Taylor for his and I, our work together that we did on the School Modernization Committee, because that really, this is a big deal. This, this is a really big deal, because when you're looking at them, there's a range here of money, from the $400 to $700 million. And this is at the same level of where we went to the voters for, for a bond referendum. So, yes, this has taken a long time. Yes, I think Councilman Taylor and I thought that there needed to be some more teeth in there, because this is really a lot of money, it's a big deal. We don't know exactly where it's going to go, but we wanted to make sure that there were some certain caveats that were, that were asked. So then, this weekend, I think a lot of this all sort of came to a head. We had two versions. A lot of the school board was not happy with version two, which had the extra things that we were asking for. And I want to give Councilmember Schulman tremendous amount of his lawyering skills, and Mark, you don't have to be threatened. His lawyering skills came up that, you know, of listening to what they had to say and listening to what, we're saying that we needed some accountability in what we were passing. He was able to take a lot of the words in their CIP that they haven't voted on yet, but they're going to be voting on, and inserting that into, into a new version. And all of y'all have been contacted, so I think you've all seen it. And I think, and also, the school board has seen it, and.
I haven't seen it.
It was emailed.
Well, I'm sorry, that's a good problem.
I'm sorry, it was emailed to everybody here. Is this all clipped together for each one? I'm sorry, Barbara, it was emailed to everybody, and.
I saw some responses, but I didn't get them. I apologize.
Everyone was meant to get it, because I did email it to everyone. I lost my train of thought for a second. Anyway, the school board members seem to be on board, so you're talking about 22 elected officials. That's kind of, that's a big number to even get a majority of 22 elected officials to agree, but I think we're kind of in that place. Most everybody, and I can't speak for Ms. Henley, because she hasn't really seen it, we just talked about it. So let me pass this out. And I think, Mr. Mayor, when we do this at the dais, I don't think we need to read the entire thing, but I think the part that was changed, we should read to the public because they haven't seen that. Maybe we can get Mr. Schulman to read the changes out loud. Would that be okay?
Oh, that'd be great.
So, I don't know, does anybody else want to say anything about, about this?
Anybody at work?
Sure, I'll be brief, but I mean, I think I've done some homework on the PPEA itself, and I too have reservations. I mean, we live in inflationary times, and this is a large amount of money. At the same time, our schools were very important, so I'll speak very briefly tonight about this.
You know, that's great, but I tell you what, this was a very challenging and important, we took a little time to talk about this, but if the final outcome could be a win-win for everybody, I think it might have been time well spent. So, but once again, you know, in challenging times, we got to make decisions that are not going to be, you know, good for the long term. So I applaud everybody that got involved.
I could call on Josh to speak to the three major changes from this, over the school board's resolution that we've asked for.
Sure. And, no, not, not at all. And I, and I want to thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, just for being open and willing to work with, with all of us and with me over the weekend, to try and get something that could be supported by both bodies in an overwhelming way, as opposed to, you know, as a, as a, because we all want to support our schools, and I think we all, we all also desire accountability and transparency, and we recognize that these are some large numbers. And what this does is, this just puts, puts us on a path to design these schools and then make a decision once we get a number. And I just, I want to thank you, Councilmember Taylor, also for working with the vice mayor to make sure that the accountability piece and the sensitivity in terms of the, you know, the, the costs of these schools were highlighted and paid attention to. The, the changes that, that we worked into this revised draft, the school board, the school board and the school division, from my understanding, there were, there were some pain points around this issue of putting forward three designs per school, or three, three options per school, because there were some, there was some feeling that, that could essentially result in, say, nine designs, which would essentially triple the design costs. So, so we wanted to make sure that there were, there were options presented to us that, that had workable, workable options within them relative to, to the cost of each of these schools, but not have it seem as though we were expecting three designs. So that, that is in paragraph A, where we made that change in the first resolve, and then also in the second resolve, we just made it, made it known that we just wanted, we're expecting some, some options that took into account the size and scale of the schools during the design process and community input process. And then the, the other piece was in the second resolve in B, we wanted to make sure that the, the schools presented a plan that was consistent, or sustainable and affordable, but, but also consistent with the city-school revenue sharing policy. And if there were additional revenues sought, that they would just follow the existing procedures outlined in the revenue sharing formula, and come, come and brief us and ask us. So, and that, that's it, so.
All right, so if there's no other discussion, we'll move on with the rest of the agenda.
Okay.
Under ordnance and resolutions, everybody?
And I know that it's not popular, and these are good causes, but I've said that I'm not going to be voting for these out-of-budget process add-ons of funding, especially since we're ready to start the budget. So I'm going to be voting no to vote one and two. I know these are not big amounts, but 30,000 here, 100,000 there, it adds up. And so I'm voting against both of those, because they're non-departmental operating grants that are being added. I do have a question. In item seven, we are updating our, our comprehensive plan, and it's long overdue and so forth, but we are hiring a consultant, and that's, that's this funding, is that correct? This is something we've never done before, and I guess it's because we don't, we're short of staff and planning. A little nervous about a consultant working on a comprehensive plan, but maybe it's good to have fresh eyes to see if we've been doing what we said we were going to do. Are there vacancies? This is just vacancy savings from the city, it's not considered just vacancy savings from Planning Department?
Vacancy cities from, it's general fund vacancy savings, so planning is incorporated, is that as well?
Is everybody else okay with ordinances and resolutions?
Yeah, on the planning.
Okay, planning, number one, Tony Sadie and Nina Sadie, that's District Nine.
I haven't heard, I've heard very minimal opposition from one person, but yeah.
Number two, Rudolph Development, General Booth, this is District Five, and I'm okay with it. Number three, 1900 Virginia Beach Boulevard, the potential change of zoning, District Six.
All good.
And number four, SXCW Properties LLC, District Four.
District Four, I approve of it. I've been and visited the site as well.
Number five, VB BTS IL LLC, District Eight. It's the cell tower.
Yes. Good to go.
And number six, the ordinance to amend the city zoning ordinance regarding conventional and other requirements in the historic Kempsville area. It's sponsored by Mr. Palucci, is everybody okay with that?
There we go.
I mean, everything is on the tab?
No.
Just not, everything so far.
What is PPA?
Oh, everything except for the PPA.
There's two speakers on that so far.
I did have one question. Well, fast enough. Number four, with the lease with Gillies Creamery. It's within ordinances resolution.
It's within ordinances, resolutions.
Farmer's Market lease.
Farmer's Market.
What was that?
This is a standard lease for, of the vendors at the farmer's market. It's the way they operate, it's a standard.
So I just had a question, and is it, how is, how do we determine the, the rental amount? That doesn't seem like it's market rent. Someone in the retail business, I'm just trying to understand.
They have the process at the farmer's market.
I'm not, is anybody here from the farmer's market? I can get some more information on it.
Okay. All righty. Okay, at this point, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions of the open meetings allowed by Section 2.23711A, Code of Virginia, as amended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiation or litigating, uh, uh, body pursuant to Section 2.23711A7. And that is national opioid litigation and personnel matters, discussion, consideration. Folks, could we have the gallery, uh, hold down a minute? Uh, discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. And that would be council appointments, boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies and appointees. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Second.
Councilor Lutte?
Aye.
Councilor Henley?
Aye.
Councilor Holson?
Aye.
Councilor Rimmick?
Aye.
Councilor Ross Hammond?
Aye.
Councilor Ross Aspin? Councilor Holton?
Aye.
Councilor Taylor?
Aye.
Councilor Lutte?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Holson?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye. Okay, we are recessed into executive.